Good morning. This is the Palm Beach County Planning Commission meeting for October 14th, 2022. We will call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. Precious, may we have a roll call? To confirm, Cor.
Sarah Pardue.
Present.
John Carr. Rick Stopek.
Here.
Barbara Roth.
Here.
Dagmar Braas.
Here.
Cara Cap. Penny Pompey.
Present.
Glenn Gromen. Spencer Siegel.
Here.
Lori Benneker.
Here.
Kylie Harper Larson. Marcia Hayden. Angela Van.
Here.
Edwin Ferguson.
Here.
David Searle.
Here.
We have Cor.
All right, great. Let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have proof of publication?
Good morning. Yes, Chair, we do.
Awesome. Thank you.
I believe we need to do a motion to allow the people to appear by.
This is like the 10th meeting that we've had. Yeah, I was gonna get.
Oh, you were gonna get to it.
I always get it. Come on, huh? So now we'd like to take a vote to allow remote participation for those on WebEx due to the extraordinary circumstances related to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, so motion by Member Benneker, second by Member Roth.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have any postponements on this agenda?
No, Chair, we do not.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for today? Motion by Member, why am I drawing?
Rick Stopek. I second the motion.
Seconded by Board Member Benneker. I apologize. All in favor?
Aye.
I think I am more fatigued than you are today.
I don't think so.
Any in opposition? The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 9th, 2022 meeting? Motion by Board Member Pompey.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Board Member Benneker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion passes unanimously. All right. Comments? Comments by the public? Don't have any general. Don't have any general comments at this point, so I'll speak briefly. We do? Am I missing something? Do we have a public comment card for an non-agenda item? Should be one. All right. Thank you. Ms. Linda Smith, please go. She's already there. Good morning.
Trying to save time. Thank you for the numbers. Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to speak just briefly on general terms. Remember, as we listen and discuss five different, I'm sorry, four different projects today. I think that's the correct number in the Ag Reserve. The objective of the Ag Reserve tier is to preserve the unique farmlands and wetlands in order to preserve and enhance the agricultural activity, environmental and water resources and open space within the Ag Reserve tier. This shall be accomplished by limiting uses to agriculture and conservation with residential development restricted to low densities and non-residential development limited to the uses serving the needs of farmworkers and residents of the tier. The agricultural reserve tier shall be preserved primarily for agricultural use, reflecting the unique farmlands and wetlands within it. I know you guys all know this. This statement is in virtually every private amendment report for a project in the agricultural tier, but it seems like it gets missed or people don't believe it or something. If they continue to assume that whether it's staff, the Planning Commission, or the Palm Beach County Commissioners will just grant their request, I have the opinion that, you know, these things are going to keep coming. Today, you will be considering a total of five, I guess, five amendments, I'm sorry if the numbers are incorrect, that add up to, I believe, 81 acres and 1,580,192 square feet, I hope the numbers are right, of proposed light industrial uses in the Ag Reserve tier. Think about the objective. And just remember, all of us residing in Palm Beach County will be directly affected by any amendments passed today altering the agricultural tier. The Planning Commission has recommended in the past to deny things, and I encourage you to consider past and future effects from your decisions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Comments by the Chair? I just want to take this time to thank my board members for making this term as your chairman so easy. Your preparedness for the meetings, your commitment to the process has made a great impression on me, so it's an honor to serve with you. And I also want to speak to Mr. Dennen. I know he's no longer on the board, but he was definitely my buddy when he and I used to be holed over there in the seats where Board Member, I keep saying Board Member. Sorry for the Freudian slip. Commissioner Stopek is sitting. He was my guy. I hope he's doing well. And he also made this a very enjoyable experience as well. So with that, I want to turn now to our first matter 3A, which is small-scale amendments for a town at Tidewater, SCA 2022-019. So we'll first start with the presentation of the applicant, then planning staff, followed by any public comments. So if anyone has, would like to speak on this agenda item, please provide your card to us, and we'll be sure to give you an opportunity to speak once the applicant and the staff have spoken, after which time the board or commission, the commission will deliberate on this issue as well. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture, and I do appreciate the opportunity to present the towns at Tidewater. You know, we all read about the headlines and continue to have discussions about the housing crisis facing Palm Beach County. In fact, next month, the voters of Palm Beach County are going to vote for or against a $200 million bond to address the housing crisis. To have a housing crisis means that we don't have enough housing to meet the growing demands. There is a shortage of housing in Palm Beach County, which is why we have an affordability problem. Although staff is recommending denial, I am going to present a project that will help address the supply shortage. This project is in the urban suburban tier, located on a major east-west roadway, and is being developed at a density consistent with the corridor. I'm going to address why the workforce housing units are being constructed off-site versus on-site. Our request today is to change the future land use from LR1 to MR5. The site is located on the south side of Hypoluxo Road. It's 9.24 acres in size, and we're requesting a land use change to MR5. So if you look at the land use designations in the area, across the street, we have the LR3 land use designation and MR5. To the east of us is LR1, and east of that is LR3. To the south and west of us is LR1. So if let's look at the surrounding zoning in the area as well. Again, we will be requesting an RS zoning district. Across the street is RS and AR. To the east of us is primarily zoning districts of PUDs. These were larger-size developments and received approval for a PUD. To the east and south of us is RT, and then we have some RS also along the corridor. So let's look at the Hypoluxo corridor. Hypoluxo Road is a major east-west corridor in Palm Beach County. We, Hypoluxo Road provides access to I-95, and there is a future planned access to the Florida Turnpike. This is the picture of Hypoluxo Road directly in front of the subject site. It is a six-lane median-divided roadway with 110 feet of ultimate right-of-way. Let's look at the surrounding uses around the property. To the north, we have Winston Trails. We have Suncoast Church of Christ. And then we have the other PUDs, Abington and River Mill. East of the site, we have the Hebron Presbyterian Church, and then we have Silverwood Estates. To the west of the subject property are single-family lots and then multiple nurseries on out to St. Matthew's Catholic Church. What we're proposing is similar to what has been developed along the Hypoluxo corridor. If you look at this corridor, there are multiple planned developments that have been developed along the corridor. And within those planned developments, the planned development and the developer has clustered the higher-density product along Hypoluxo Road. So if you look at the north side of Hypoluxo Road, you have the River Mill development. That PUD has a density of five units to the acre, but the pod abutting Hypoluxo Road has a density of 12.5. Lantern Key also has a density of five units per acre for the PUD, but the net density of that pod facing Hypoluxo is 7.8. Again, Tuscana. Tuscana located the multifamily portion of the PUD along Hypoluxo Road for a density of 16.8 units per acre, while the PUD had a density of 5.9. Similarly, Silverwood Estates clustered their higher-density product, 10.2 units to the acre. It's a townhouse product with the single-family development located in the rear being 3.9 dwelling units per acre for the PUD. The point of this slide is to show that the Hypoluxo corridor contains higher-density townhouse and multifamily development. Although the, many of the PUDs have a lower PUD density, they also have a significantly larger land area to cluster development. So let's look at, in the staff report, staff talked about the enclave, that this could be a potential enclave similar to Pioneer Estates. So this is the enclave as identified by staff. And I'm just want to take a closer look at what is included within the enclave. So we have commercial located at the corner of Jog and Hypoluxo. We have the Osprey Oaks PUD that was approved, as well as the subdivisions that were approved along Western Way. My prior firm worked on this project and received approval for these, this development. This development also clustered their workforce housing on Jog Road as condos. We have the single-family lots along Saddle Road. Again, those properties were subdivided into .6 of an acre. We have churches that also front along Hypoluxo Road. And then we have a lot of nurseries that are located within the Ranches Road enclave. So the enclave, and then finally, we do have some home occupational licenses on several of the properties within the enclave. And then when you look at access to this enclave, most of the properties that front Hypoluxo Road access their properties from Hypoluxo Road, the churches, the commercial, the nursery sites that have been approved. It's our opinion that, especially along Hypoluxo Road, that this should not be included or considered part of the enclave. This is the Pioneer Road enclave, which actually has officially been approved by the Board of County Commissioners. And as you will look at this map, you'll note that those parcels located along Jog Road were excluded from the enclave. So similar to Pioneer Road overlay, our lots front on Hypoluxo Road, and it's our opinion that they should not be included in any consideration of the property for the enclave principles. Second, the net, it's not feasible. An enclave considers rural residential development. That's what an enclave is. It's not feasible to think that these lots would be developed with one single-family home. The proposed townhouse development provides for a transition between Hypoluxo Road and the development along Hypoluxo Road to the single-family in the rear. Again, we are not accessing any of the internal roads within the enclave. Our access is primarily, and is only, from Hypoluxo Road. Our density that we're proposing is consistent with other developments along the corridor. So normally, this board doesn't deal a lot with site plans. This is a small-scale comp plan amendment, so we submitted a concurrent zoning application for site plan approval for our townhouse project. And just to, we want to identify why this project is appropriate for the area. So this is, if the land use change is approved, this is the proposed site plan for the project. Again, the site is 9.24 acres. It truly is an infill site. We are requesting the MR5, and we're requesting a zoning designation of RS. With the MR5 land use designation, we would be permitted 74 dwelling units, and we are proposing 64, or 69. The density again is 7.4. We're proposing townhouses. And to meet our workforce housing requirement, we're proposing to relocate our workforce housing requirement off-site to a rental project. If we built them on-site, we would be required 11 workforce housing units. Off-site, we're required to, we're required to construct 17 workforce housing units. So the type of project that we're proposing is a townhouse project. It's a very nice product type. The interior units are 22 feet wide. The minimum width is 16 for a townhouse, so we are well above the minimums. The end units are actually 24 feet wide. We have two-car garages. We have a 25-foot rear yard. We have a 25-foot front yard. Very ni, you know, very ni, a very nice townhouse development. More ideal for single, for a family to locate. We'll have two- and three-bedroom units, so. And we also have the recreational amenities to meet the needs of the residents. We have a nice gated entry. We have a pool with a cabana. We also have an 1,800-square-foot clubhouse. Walking trails throughout the property, and we know that we are abutting Hypoluxo Road, which is a major roadway. So we're proposing a very nice buffer along Hypoluxo with, the canal is about 75 feet in width. We are proposing our 20-foot landscape buffer, and then all the units have, again, an additional 25-foot setback. So, you know, why are we asking for MR5? Staff has an alternative recommendation of LR3 in the staff report. And there's a reason why we're requesting MR5 and why we're requesting to build our units off-site. So this is a section of, from the zoning code that talks about TDRs and talks about workforce housing. The reason why we're requesting MR5 is because we cannot meet our density with the LR3 land use designation because we are proposing to build our units off-site. The TDR program requires you to build your units on-site, as highlighted here. As with the TDRs, the workforce housing units resulting from the TDRs must be provided on-site. We are proposing to construct our units off-site, so the TDR program is not an option for this developer. I have heard that the staff is maybe proposing changes to the TDR program, but those TDR, those changes are not in effect yet. We're scheduled to go to the board at the end of next month, and the client is anxious to move forward with this project. So we are following the rules that are in place. Secondly, the workforce housing program allows developers to build their units off-site. I know that there's some concern with the fact that we're not building the units on-site from some of the neighborhood groups, but the code allows for off-site development. And actually, when you build your units off-site, you are required to build more of those units. So an on-site project would require 11 units. An off-site project requires 17. So you actually get more workforce housing units by building them off-site. This is a graph that shows the, why we need MR5. With LR1, because we can't use the TDR program because we're building our units off-site. The current land use designation gives us 14 dwelling units. That's using the PUD density, as well as the workforce housing density bonus. When you look at the LR3 designation with the PUD, with the 17 additional workforce housing units, we only get 47. With MR5, with the PUD, with the workforce housing, you get 74 dwelling units. We are not proposing to max out the site with 74 dwelling units. We've developed a site plan that works well with the amount of land that we have and the fact that we want to build a larger product on this property versus the minimum size of a townhouse. So we are proposing 69 units to be constructed on-site and 17 workforce housing units to be constructed off-site. This chart shows of all the workforce housing projects approved in Palm Beach County, the left side identifies those workforce housing projects that are, that are rental, and the right side identifies those workforce housing projects that are for sale. You only have two for-sale projects. One is Mary Place, and that is in the city of West Palm Beach at Pleasant City. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you. Staff, I think I goofed. I asked Vice Chair to set it at 15 minutes. I think we normally give the applicant 20, don't we?
It is up, it's your discretion, but I think 20 minutes has been given in the past.
It is my error. I instructed him to 15. So we're going to give you five more minutes, but then once it rings, if you don't mind.
Sure, no problem. Thank you very much. I'm almost done. So this graph shows that there are two projects that are providing for for-sale. One is Mary Place. That was a Pulte project. That is actually in the city of West Palm Beach in Pleasant City. The second project is a Madamie Homes project. It's a mixed-use project on Lake Worth Road. The majority of their workforce housing units that are for sale are clustered in that building on the left-hand side of the slide, and those are condo units. And then we have two on-site units. So you can see the workforce housing program provides for off-site and rental, rental projects. The number of units that we're providing off-site is at an increased rate of one and a half times. The need for housing includes rental and allows for the development of for-sale townhouses, which we are proposing, which are larger, and they tend to accommodate families. In summary, we're consistent with the policies regarding density for the urban suburban tier. We're consistent with the county directives for infill development, and we're consistent with the corridor density, as well as the workforce housing policy. In closing, I want to state that we continue to hear the term "use the tools in the toolbox." Well, we are utilizing the tools in the toolbox, and one of those is to construct workforce housing and to construct it off-site so that we are following county directives. The workforce housing program provides for several ways to address the workforce housing requirement. We are following the rules and utilizing the tools. Last month, the BCC approved a four-story multifamily project at eight units to the acre in the Ag Reserve so that there could be diversity of housing. We are proposing an infill townhouse project in the urban suburban tier with access on a major east-west corridor that will deliver 69 market-rate townhouse units and 17 workforce housing multifamily units. We respectfully request your support for the proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff?
Enos Stevcek with the Planning Division will be presenting.
Okay.
Good morning. Enos Stevcek was planning to, was planning division. Town of Tidewater is small-scale amendment. This is 9.2-acre site. It's located on south side of Hypoluxo Road. It's east of Jog Road. The subject site is located in the eastern half of the low-density Palm Beach Ranches subdivision. This amendment request proposes to change the low-residential, one-unit-per-acre, future land use designation to medium-residential, five units per acre. The applicant is also requesting additional density bonuses through the workforce housing program for a total of 69 units at 7.5 units per acre overall density. The site's location is on Hypoluxo Road, next to Jog Road, is generally a low-density corridor, residential in character with future land use designations ranging from LR1 to LR3. There are also several institutional uses, places of worship located along the corridor, including immediately east of the site. This is a close-up of the area. Subject site is surrounded by single-family homes on 1-5 acre lots and few institutional uses. The subject site is located in the eastern half of the low-density Palm Beach Ranches subdivision. This is unrecorded plot that was created in 60s and consisted of five-plus acre lots. In 2000s, in the western part, a developer acquired approximately 17 lots and developed Osprey Oaks PUD with a total 280 units. It was developed under LR1, future land use designation, with the purchase of TDR density bonus units. In the eastern half of the Palm Beach Ranches subdivision, where the subject site is located, several lots were also subdivided into one-acre lots. The area remains a combination of large lots ranging in size from 1 to 5 acres with a LR1 flu. This area is one of handful of low-density residential and agricultural pockets remaining in the urban suburban tier. In 2018, Palm Beach County adopted a rural enclave policy in the comprehensive plan to support the preservation of these areas and to recognize that these areas provide a valuable contribution to the housing diversity and lifestyle choices in the county. This slide has a rural enclave policy 2.21P language, and it's included in the staff report. Staff assessment: Residential density increase is not compatible with the nature of this rural enclave and therefore is not appropriate at this location. The applicant is proposing no transfer of development rights, which is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan policy 2.4B provisions that establishes TDRs as a required method of increasing density. The applicant's proposal to increase density primarily through the flu increase has effect on reducing the project workforce housing obligation from potential 16 units to 11. Additionally, applicant is proposing workforce housing obligation to be provided as off-site rental units with off-site multiplier applied. Generally, the request is not consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. During the public notification process, the planning division sent out letters to interested parties and five- parties and 500 feet notices. Notices went to Coalition of Boynton West Residential Association and six homeowners' associations. To date, staff received few phone calls and emails subjecting the amendment were received from residents. One email is in Exhibit 9 in the staff report, communication received after the publication date our place had dialed. Staff recommends denial of the request based on its incompatibility with the rural enclave and being generally inconsistent with comprehensive plan policies. Okay, I'm moving to another part. However, staff recognizes that the board has a discretion to approve the project. Should the board approve the request, staff recommends the lowest flu of LR3 that would achieve the applicant's target in combination with transfer of development rights and workforce housing density bonuses. This is consistent with the staff recommendation on other amendments requesting increase in density. Should the board adopt as LR3, this is condition that staff recommends cap development at 69 units, purchase of 28 TDRs, and the zoning development order shall require minimum of 23% as onsite workforce housing units.
Thank you. So, we have a number of public comment cards. We have numbers at the podiums, so that's going to be great. So, as I call your name, please come to the podium, the numbered podium. So, first off, James Knight, Podium 1. Ellen John or Ellen Tan, I apologize, I think that is Tan, Podium 2. We have numbers, numbers tonight. No confusion. Todd's to my left and all that. Three minutes.
Good morning. Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. I'm supporter of this project. It's running on a six-lane highway here. The currently in the code, you're allowed to build your units off-site. I believe a project came in for Toll Brothers not too long ago here and this board supported the units being built off-site and so I'm in support of it and I won't take any more of your time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Good morning, Ms. Tan?
Tannehill, Ellen Tannehill.
Tannehill.
I live at 6388 Ranches Road, so I am in that rural urban enclave. You keep on showing the Osprey Oaks PUD. You include my property and another homeowner's property in the PUD, which we are not in the Osprey Oaks PUD. I support staff's denial of this. If they want to increase the density, let them buy the TDRs. And I don't really, I'm not really supportive of this workforce housing off-site. I mean, who keeps track of where it's going and whether it's actually done? I read that article in The Post about some of the stuff that was supposed to be done and never was, and especially with Osprey Oaks when they did the, they did some workforce housing there. I forget the name of the project at the time. That was never done even though the county commission sold them back land that had been donated to them for civic use for a dollar. So, density is just too high for our area, even if it is on Hypoluxa Road. And if he wants to do that, you know, he should go through the proper channels that staff has recommended and buy the TDRs to get it. Thank you for consideration.
Ms. Tannehill, before you go, would you mind providing me with your address, please?
6388 Ranches Road.
Ranches?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good weekend. Podium 1, Todd Schur, and Podium 2, Roxanne Ald.
Morning, folks.
Morning.
Well, unlike, I'm not sure, some of my neighbors, but I grew up in that neighborhood, 51 years. Was away for about 15, but recently moved back. And I have seen the entire area change before my eyes. I used to ride horses where there are now thousands of houses. I, population, the development is going to move forward. Hypoluxa has gotten so crowded from 441 to military is nothing but large communities and now this would be another one to include. The traffic density for the east and west commute to the interstate is horrible at certain times of the day. Everyone doing the same thing at the same time. It's not a good fit. It's, there's a lot of nature in the area. I live on Ranches Road. It's just more of the same and there's plenty, plenty of communities already on Hypoluxa Road. And more and more traffic lights, congestion, it's just very crowded. And I've seen this over time and it's just gotten so bad. And now we want to add another 4,000 people to the mix? Not good. They're all going to be working, going to 95, but that just increases the problem. Too many people. That's about all I have to say. I don't really agree with the project and I just wanted to make that note out there because it's not a good fit. At least it's just another of the same that's already lining that road. You can go up and down it and it's just more townhouses, more communities. And it'd be nice not to have more of the same, at least in that area. So, I have to say, thank you for my consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Schur. Have a good weekend. Good morning, Ms. Ald.
I'm Roxanne Ald. I live right next door to this proposed monstrosity. I live at 5705 Ranches Road, Hypoluxa, and I have lived there for close to 40 years. I've seen Hypoluxa go from a two-lane road with jog being the end of the world and turning to a dirt road going south and nothing out there. This community has been there forever and the people all know each other. I've known Todd, he used to ride horses with my daughter. She's, my daughter lives with me. We have been there so long and things have changed. This is an established community. It is not like these other communities they're talking about. They were raw land or at the most nurseries that they bought up and developed. This is established. It has been permitted, established for over 40 years that I know of, that I've been there. And it's been the same with very few people moving in and out. A few people died because of age. A lot like me have children that have grown up and still want to be there. They're proposing a change to this whole area. This is two properties that he has, two properties that he wants to stuff all that stuff on. There were, on one, a family, the Grunwalds, who lived there for many years and had raised, I think, five children. And the parents died off and that's the only reason that property became available because the children all split up the inheritances. The other one has gone through a few owners. It's always been nice owners and they did, they grew, the last fellow that was our Gruor Kids for Palm Beach. So, it has been, this is, you're talking 9.6 acres or something and he wants to stuff all this stuff on there. It is totally incongruous. I have two-and-a-half acres. I'd like to have more, but I have two-and-a-half. Some people have two-and-a-hafths. The ones on Saddle Road have one usually and a few in there have five. Everybody keeps up their property. And when they came in, they've always, developers have always wanted to tear the place up, but you know, raw land is cheaper, so they go out and buy raw land, which they should. You don't tear up a community to put something different in there and try to change it. This will change the thing, the whole community, it'll be changed. People come by my house, feed my horses, do things. They like to see a little bit of something in the midst of all these townhouses and all that, that are other developments. It's just totally incongruous with the whole area there. Our section is just plainly what it is and it has always been that way and we don't want it changed. The other side of him, which he's not making note of, was a church. They bought, have some land they're holding just on the other side, which is in between him and the Boynton Canal. They got a blue mark on it or something so that they're not making mention of what it is. And then from there, they have sort of people that have a little bit maybe less land and they like, they like that. And on my side and the other, we have a little more land. We, but, Hypoluxa Road, but there is a section between my house and all the other houses that goes to the canal. There's an easement there. Some of us, some of us have entrances over the canal, some don't. He's talking about taking some land that belongs to the county basically and changing it into an entrance for his place, people going in and out, a huge area. What's he going to do with the canal? He's going to, he's going to build a bridge over the canal or is he going to fill it in like he did at his other place? Yes, I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next up, we have Constance Allen, Podium 1, and Ray Allen, Podium 2. Good morning to both of you.
Good morning.
Good morning. You ready?
Yes, we are.
I am denying this project. I live at 5907 Ranches Road. I've been there 40 years. It has been a wonderful place to live and raise my family. It's very rural. As it has been established by your departments, we are unique and we would really think it's important for the whole community if we remain the same as we are. Proposing 69 units, let's say two people per unit coming out of there, you know, on the roads, 138 people. We don't even have 138 people in our whole entire development. So, it's really, well, I'm sorry, if I included the center part, which I forgot, which was Osprey Oaks, and they worked with us as a community to discuss with us what we wanted them to do, placed their two stories away from other people who were outside their wall. So, they were very helpful to our community, but in the long run, this is just ridiculous. Why can't we remain our rural area? I mean, why? Why does everything have to be moved in on like this? It's just wrong. Your community, your committees here saw that it is wrong and we would appreciate if you would deny this subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Good morning.
Good morning. Ray Allen, 5907 Ranches Road. I've been out there 41 years. I've seen this area grow up a little bit, but I am supporting the staff's denial request on this project for the various reasons that have been stated already, but let's talk about the characteristics of the neighborhood and I think that the staff planner mentioned the fact that there are certain areas that the county wants to have remain like they are and this is one of those areas that's out there. We're going to keep picking these things off and we're not going to have these kind of developments any longer. Even when Osprey Oaks was under the development stage, we worked with them and kept the characteristics of the neighborhood. There are some out parcels that ended up being outside of the core of where Osprey Oaks was or is today and they use that for single-family development. They didn't try to come in there and push in a development of this type and this nature in there. It is, we're not going to have any of these places left in Palm Beach County if we keep allowing this to happen. If for some strange reason, the board decides to go ahead and pass this through, we'll certainly speak again at the county commission's side of it, but it was pointed out by the developer's representative that there would be no access on Ranches Road, but I saw an emergency access on there. That's something that we are definitely opposed to if this project has to go through, that they have any access to our neighborhood back there. The density which everybody has talked about is extremely obsessive for a less than 10-acre site there and cramming all those housing units inside there. When we worked with the developer at Osprey Oaks, we were able to maintain the characteristics of the neighborhood. That's what we're asking this board to support so that we can still have these type of areas in Palm Beach County. So, we are definitely in denial of that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Oh, I pressed the call. Aren't you supposed to do that if you want to speak? Ask the chair to speak.
So, the majority of the public comments were in opposition, but having said that, Ms. Morton, do you want, I'll give you two minutes if you feel there's something you want to respond to from the public comments.
Thank you very much, Chair. The one thing I wanted to just point out that, you know, this is a small infill parcel. Townhouses are considered consistent with single-family. We are not going to detract from the Ranches Road neighborhood. We have no access on Ranches Road. We are buffering ourselves from Ranches Road and our density is consistent with the Hypoluxa corridor. When you look at the corridor, this proposed density is consistent and we're not encroaching in, into the Ranches Road enclave. So, we respectfully request support for the proposed infill. And we need housing. I mean, we have a housing shortage. We need housing and this is on a major corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any response to any of the public comments that you'd like to make?
No, Chair.
Okay. All right, at this time, Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff or the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Vineker.
Hi, thank you.
Oh, also, let the record reflect that Commissioner Kylie Harper-Larson, she's here, she's been here for well over 25 minutes. Good morning.
I have a question for staff, if you can answer this. With the staff's recommendation for conditions, should the board adopt as LR3, staff's recommend, is recommending denial, but they say if you, if we do have LR3, how many workforce housing units would there be? Because I noticed in the staff report, it said that there would be more with LR3.
Yes, it will be 16 units onsite.
And 16 units onsite?
Yes.
And they would have 17 units offsite?
With, if this 16 units applied multiplier, it will be 24, but we prefer 16 units onsite. Because onsite for sale, it's more preferable.
Right. Okay, but altogether? Altogether, how many workforce housing units would there be?
If the multiplier is 1.5, it will be 24.
24 units, which is, which is more than they would be getting with MR5.
Because right now, they calculating at 11 units onsite or 17 units offsite.
Right.
We're recommending at least 16 units onsite.
And we'd have 24 units altogether? Correct?
If onsite, so if they're built onsite, it would be 16. When they propose to do offsite, that's where that 1.5 multiplier kicks in. So, if they were to do the offsite rental like they mentioned, then it would go to 24, but what staff would recommend would be the 16 units onsite.
Onsite, okay. And I have a question for the applicant, okay? My question is, this offsite property, where is it? And is it proposed yet or is it going to be built?
It is to the west villages of Windsor. It's a multifamily project that is proposed to be built. So, it's just down the street, but if I could just clarify, if we use the TDR program, we cannot transfer those units offsite. We have to build them onsite. So, that's why we are not utilizing the TDR program.
So, can staff comment to that because you just said it would be 24 units offsite? Go ahead. Great to see you.
Good morning. Yes, let me first address the TDR component. The comprehensive plan has a policy that requires TDRs as the method of increasing density. That's why every amendment that comes before you in the urban suburban tier includes the recommendation or the finding that TDRs should be applied. So, the description earlier by the agent that they would prefer not to use TDRs is something that's available to a project that's coming in that isn't seeking a land use change and a density increase. If you are seeking a density increase in the urban suburban tier, you will have to comply with Policy 24B. That will be the staff recommendation. And then your other question was with regard to the number of units and whether they are provided onsite or offsite. The board has given staff direction that, again, when an amendment is in process, not when a project comes in to use its existing land use designation, but when an amendment is in process seeking a density increase, that staff is to recommend to the board for their consideration, a set percentage of units. For townhomes, that's typically 20%. However, what happens is when we apply the TDR requirement per Policy 24B and we then look at the code provisions, look at the code provisions, the actual number required by the code is higher than 20%. So you end up with a staff recommendation for 23%. And again, on-site, because that is the direction that the board has given us to present to them. So can the board choose not to require those units on-site? Of course. And if that happens, and they are able to provide them off-site, then that multiplier kicks in. That multiplier is for a for-sale project that chooses to provide its units as off-site rentals. Then the multiplier kicks in. The numbers are varying because the scenarios are different, depending on how many TDRs you're using, if you're using any workforce housing density bonus, or if they're on-site or off-site. I'm sorry that it's complicated, but that is, those are the factors that we have to work with.
And the conditions appear a little complicated as well. Just wanted to know, the overall, would we be getting more workforce housing with your proposal in case we do approve an LR3? That's the thing. Would we be getting more workforce housing units?
With LR3, you will get more because the TDRs will apply. You will get more than if TDRs are not used. They're proposing to do them off-site, again, inconsistent with the direction of the board. So they'd become more units if provided as rentals off-site. I don't know how else to clarify that.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much. Question?
Commissioner Stopek, then Commissioner Braz, and then Commissioner Roth.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick, two questions for the applicant, if I may. Sorry. Could you just elaborate a little bit more on the emergency exit on the south side of the property there? The uses, nonuses of that, access to it? I assume it's mostly a fire rescue issue?
It's only for fire rescue. We have no proposed resident ingress egress from Ranches Road. We're totally separated. Our only ingress and egress will be from Hypoluxo Road.
Will it be used as a construction exit during development if that were to go forward?
We can utilize Hypoluxo as our construction entrance. We can keep all impacts off of Ranches Road.
I sense that's a big issue.
And I can tell that's important, so.
And just a quick question. Ballpark pricing on these projects? I know you said market rate?
Mm-hmm.
Do we know what that number is roughly?
I don't. I don't know. I mean, the client has, the market continues to change, so it's hard to say. But I would say 400 and up for the townhouse units.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Braz, good morning.
The applicant has referred to the project as infill. Usually, infill means that there's, you know, something comparable to what they're requesting on three sides. Does staff agree that this is an infill project?
So based on the definition of infill in the comp plan, I was just double-checking it. It would have to be surrounded by a land use designation of at least three units per acre, which the site is not. So we would not consider this infill.
Any additional follow-up, Commissioner? Commissioner Braz, any additional follow-up?
No, no, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Roth.
Good morning. First to staff, I've heard the reference on this project applicant and from others about the turnpike at Hypoluxo. Do we have someone from our traffic department here? Yes. Hi. What's the latest? I keep hearing about the turnpike. It's of interest to many of those communities along Hypoluxo. We remember when the ramp was built over, you know, to connect Hypoluxo east and west. What's your timing from FDOT?
For the record, I'm Dominic with Traffic. Unfortunately, I am not privy of this information for the time being, but I relayed the message.
Thank you. My understanding, just having been in the area, in that area along Hypoluxo for 20 years and, you know, hearing some discussions, is that that's not coming soon. So yes, there is access further east for 95. Oh, hi.
Hi, thank you. Question my own. Yes, it is on our long-term plans that interchange. It has always been, but it's not funded for construction in the five-year program.
Thank you, yeah.
It could be done at any time.
That's sort of where I was going with it. Thank you. To the applicant, please, Ms. Morton. At the beginning, you use the term "not feasible." Those were your words in terms of building a single-family homes, and yet townhouses fall into that definition. Why not feasible with what most of us think of as single-family, not attached? Why is it not feasible?
The property fronts on Hypoluxo Road, and to sell those as one single-family lot doesn't seem feasible or the highest and best use of the property. Maybe that's a better term instead of feasible, but highest and best use. So one of the properties had a nursery on it. When you have a nursery, you have the ag classification. So, you know, the ability to sell it as another single-family lot, I don't know that that is, that that's feasible, at least for our clients, so.
For your client?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I would just like that noted. Thank you. With the issue of transferring the workforce housing units from a for-sale product to a rental product, it concerns me because, for years, we've been hearing in the county, as I've attended many of the workforce housing discussions, the need for for-sale products in a more affordable project. As you heard, when asked, the applicant told us that these would be transferred to a very dense project. Some of us use the term "hyperdense" at Hypoluxo and Lyons Road, which is an all-rental property. So this doesn't really do anything in terms of increasing the number of for-sale units in a workforce housing category. It's so confusing, you know, for all of us who have done this for years, and certainly for the public, to understand. And I think it was...
Commissioner Roth, I'm going to interrupt you. Do you have a question for staff or the applicant?
Thank you. Ms. Tannenbaum, you kind of read my mind and some of the things that I've said in terms of the complexity of this, so thank you.
All right. So again, we have a pretty extensive agenda today, board member or commissioners. So let's reserve this space of the meeting to questions to staff and the applicant. Once we have a motion on the floor, by all means, let whatever your position is on these respective items be known. Are there any other commissioners who would like to ask questions of the applicant or staff who have not already asked questions? I'm looking to my left first. Commissioner Vineker, by the way, I'm going to come in.
Only just a motion.
Okay, one second. Anyone else to the right? On WebEx, Commissioners Pardue and Van, do you have any questions for staff or the applicant?
None, from Pardue.
All right. Commissioner Van? I have one question of staff. There was a representation by one of the public commentators that there have been situations in the past where the supposed off-site workforce housing never was constructed. Is that true?
Yes, and thank you. I actually did want to jump in when I said I didn't have any responses. So what, our monitoring section, anytime there's a project, whether it's on-site or if they're using off-site, that is monitored and building permits will be held up if the certain thresholds for those units to be constructed haven't been. So those are monitored and ensured that, you know, off-site obligations for workforce housing units are built.
So then, I'm asking, perhaps I wasn't clear. So are there any instances that you're aware of where an applicant has failed to build the workforce housing off-site as promised?
Not in my time here, no.
Okay. And how long have you been employed with the county?
Since 2019.
Okay. Anyone else?
If I may, I can address that further. What is sometimes a source of confusion is when an applicant chooses to pay the in-lieu fee instead, the buyout. That only happens in about 13% of the required units. But units that are required to be built, as Kevin has indicated, are monitored, they are built, and they're monitored after the fact as well.
What is done with the money that is provided in lieu of, as you say?
The money that's provided in the in-lieu fee goes to the Housing Trust Fund. A portion of that money is then used as down payment assistance by the Housing and Economic Development Department of the county for purchasers of workforce housing.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner?
Good morning, commissioners. I do have two questions of staff, and this is to the planning director. What are the enforcement protocols specifically for not building if they do not take the in-lieu of? And subsequent question, what is the timeline for that enforcement protocol to happen?
Okay. I'll start the answer, then I'll have Maria jump in, because she's a little more day-to-day on the details of this. So when I mentioned the monitoring, so let's just use any project as an example, and the Board of County Commissioners approves them to do their units off-site. What monitoring staff would see is when they then apply for that development to come in for building permits, there are a certain number of units that have to be built at certain points. And if they aren't, their building permits will not be issued. So it would hold up the construction of the approved project until such time that they're meeting their obligations for the workforce housing units off-site. And Maria, if there's anything you want to add?
The thresholds are that 50% of the workforce units have to be in place at 50% of the market rate project units, and 100% of the workforce units have to be done at 85% of the workforce, of the market rate units.
Follow-up question for you. So we're talking about percentages here, and we're not talking about actual timelines, okay? And when we talk about land, we also have to look at values and prospectuses. And as we're dealing with a finite amount of property on the eastern side of Palm Beach County in a rural enclave that has distinguished value as it is right now and very inflated value as it could be. If we're talking about percentages, then that value, given a different land use designation currently, inflates the value from its current. And you have then percentages and not timelines in which to develop on. That then allows a property owner to then have an inflated value, right? And a percentage to deal on and no timeline at which this board and the county commissioners have for a deliverable. And so what I'm seeing, what I think I'm hearing, and I'm just looking for confirmation here, is if we made the decision to support the applicant, and then they decided then to sell the land with a new land use designation, and then somebody else comes back in, and here we go, round and round again, we still don't get our workforce housing units that are absolutely essential for our county to function with its current infrastructure limitations.
That's a question, right?
Am I correct in that?
If the amendment were to be approved and had conditions of approval attached to it, then those conditions would apply to a subsequent project and a subsequent owner. Thank you, Maria.
All right. Commissioner Vineker, you would like to make a motion?
Yes. Rather than to completely deny the application and put a motion to deny, I motion to go with staff's recommendation for conditions on an LR3 designation. And those conditions include that they're still giving them the 69 dwelling units that they wanted. And, but there'll be a minimum of 28 TDR units purchased and constructed on-site, 34% purchased at the workforce housing price rate, just what you have here, the 1, 2, and 3, okay? And the zoning development order requires a minimum of 23% of the total dwelling units to be built on-site as workforce housing units. Those, is that, that still works for the staff, exactly what you recommended?
Yeah, just to be clear, so the staff recommendation was denial, but you're correct that should the project go forward, those are the conditions that staff would recommend.
Yes. So if you just go to E1, and I would go with that, I think it's reasonable. I think it's brilliant. I think it's fair. And maybe somebody wants to second it for discussion.
I do want to second it, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we have a second by the vice chair, and we'll open it up for discussion. Yes, Commissioner Stopek.
Can we do that? Do we have the ability to do that in the form of a motion and not go with the actual item as a deliverable?
We can recommend that because staff is right there. They're saying that they'll recommend that. If you don't recommend denial, they would go with this, the conditions with that. They suggest those conditions. So we can suggest that.
Point of order, I would say if you have a question on the protocol, we probably should address the question to the attorney with all due respect, so. But I understand that.
It's fine.
Thank you. Follow-up, any follow-up questions? Commissioner Stopek?
A follow-up to that would be, you know, I always do look for compromise, and I appreciate the opportunity to have something like that here. We should probably give the applicant an opportunity. Is this something that they can live with? Is this something that has been talked about? Has, you know, hopefully, these things would have been hashed out prior.
Well, I don't think we would be appropriate at this point. We've asked questions of the applicant, and I think she's already stated that. Commissioner Roth asked a question. I think she said something to the effect it wouldn't be in her client's best interest or something to that effect. So I think she's already addressed the feasibility from her client's position in that regard. So I think it's now appropriate for us to discuss the motion and vote it up, vote it down, and move forward from there.
So we're going to move forward with a modified motion at this point?
It's not a modified motion. This is the current motion on the floor. So is there any other unreadiness or questions? Yes, Commissioner Roth. Yes. And then Commissioner Braz.
Thank you. My question is, just for clarity, if we were to go with this motion and agree to it, is there any impact on the villages of Windsor, which would have been the receiving project for 17 workforce housing units?
So the conditions that staff proposed include that the units be built on-site. So if that's ultimately adopted by the board, then there wouldn't be any transfer of a workforce housing obligation to villages of Windsor.
Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Braz?
So at the end of the day, there will still be 69 units built on that nine-plus acres?
Yes, with that motion, with the LR3, TDRs, and workforce housing program, you can still get to that 69 target unit.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, vice chair.
I was just going to weigh in and say that we were talking about having for-sale workforce housing units, and this is how we get there, as my colleague has mentioned. And so I'm in support of this, and we'll vote yes for it today.
All right. Going to turn to WebEx again. Commissioners Pardue and Commissioner Van, do you have any concerns or questions that you'd like to address before we vote?
This is Pardue, and no, you've already answered my questions.
Okay. All right, at this time, seeing no other unreadiness, we'll have a roll call vote. Precious?
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Lori Vineker?
Yes.
Penny Pompey?
Yes.
Spencer Siegel?
Yes.
Dagmar Braz?
Yes.
Sarah Pardue?
Yes.
Kylie Harper-Larson?
Yes.
Angela Van? Marcy, Marcia Hayden? Rick Stopek?
Yes.
David Searle?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before we turn to 3B1, if there are any persons in the audience who'd like to comment on this, please submit your cards. Now, technically, we're not supposed to, we really shouldn't allow you to submit cards once the presentation starts. So if you're interested in commenting on this, please approach the podium and provide your card now. Thank you. All right, so seeing as she's en route, we're going to turn to 3B1, the Green Acres ISBA reference. Specifically, I'm sorry, 3B was Amendment Round 23A, Public Hearing Number 2, subsection 1 would be Green Acres ISBA reference. Do we have an applicant to present on this matter or no?
This is a county-initiated question my own with Palm Beach County Planning. Greenacre Inter-local Service Boundary Agreement, ISBA text amendment. It's a simple amendment to incorporate by reference the already-adopted ISBA by the City of Green Acres and by the Board of County Commissioners. What does an ISBA does? It will set out a... What does an ISBA does, it will set out a plan for how service will be provided, it identifies planning areas, priority areas, and provides big picture for planning, proper planning. It still requires notification to all residents prior to annexation. ISB itself does not annex any property, just to clarify. The location is generally southeast corner of Lake Worth and Jog Road, that shopping center in the crosshatching, and I will show you aerial further, and a Shell gas station on the north side of the Lake Worth, all surrounded by City of Green Acres. This is the aerial, you can see better picture, southeast corner, and the Shell gas station on the north. We have been working on this since 2020 with the City of Green Acres, followed all the procedures, including two hearings by the city and the county, and it was adopted. The statute requires that after the ISBA has adopted, it should be referenced in the comp plan within six months. That's why we are recommending approval of this amendment, and the language is number three, just a simple language, to refer to the adopted ISBA. Thank you. With this, we request a motion to recommend approval.
All right. So we have a few public comment cards. All right. Right now, I only have two. So those are for Cara Ferris, please approach Podium 1, and Horatio, I'm having a little trouble reading the last name. The address is 5306 West Atlantic Avenue in Delray. Horatio, please come to Podium 2, please.
That's for another application, that's a mistake.
Says 3BA, so which one would you like to speak on, sir?
No, I did not.
You don't?
No.
All right. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Cara Ferris. I'm representing the City of Green Acres at this meeting today, and I just wanted to say that we support the amendments moving forward, and we'll be moving forward with our own amendments in regards to the adoption of the ISBA. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, we're out of cards, so is there any questions from any of the Commissioners? I think I saw, Commissioner Roth, did you want to, were you signaling?
I'm going to make a motion.
All right, is there any questions before we, okay. Commissioner Roth, you want to present a motion?
I move to approve Item 3B1.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Kylie Harper Larson. I guess we can just do this by, by I. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition, please speak. All right, I think we have a unanimous vote there. Let's turn to 3B2, which is the LTG Sports Turf, LGA 2023-007. Who will be presenting on this project? I appreciate it.
My name is Bradley Miller at Urban Design Studio, and here representing the applicant. Appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation for LTG Sports Turf. This is a property that actually falls on the west side of State Road 7 at the extension of Buington Beach Boulevard. You can see here on the slide of some of the surrounding uses, and on the, it's really surrounded on all three sides by either industrial or commercial type uses, which I'll, I can describe. And this is a, one of the properties that you're hearing several here today that are applying the new commerce land use designation that was adopted by the board in, in August. And really, this is a great example of why the board adopted that, that land use to control the industrial types of uses that, that might be favorable and suitable for this area. So just to go into it a little bit, my, my client, LTG Sports Turf, what they do is they actually install and maintain sports facilities with artificial turf. They have owned the property since 2019. Unfortunately, they bought it in a situation where they thought that they could run their business from there to find out that they couldn't. You've seen in the staff report that there's code enforcement action for that, and the, the approval of this amendment and the corresponding zoning would bring them into compliance with, with the code enforcement action. There were some other smaller components to the code enforcement that they've taken care of, cleaning up the site, getting a fence permit, things like that. They've done everything they can up to this point and up to this application to, to resolve those enforcement issues. So they, they do branch out to various areas throughout the state, but they've done something, you can see some of the, the logos there on the slide of local facilities that they've worked on, FAU, and some of the stadiums down in Miami. The, the nature of their business is that, and I'm going to paraphrase my client here, if his equipment and the use, the actual use, zoning use for the property would be considered a contractor's storage yard. Should have clarified that earlier. So he, he will have equipment there, he'll have a, a building there that'll have an ancillary office space, and, but most of it is an open yard for storage of his equipment. To paraphrase him, he says, is, if the equipment's on the site, he's not making any money. The, the whole idea is that his equipment goes to the job site, his employees go to the job site, it's a very low-impact type of use for, for the property. The, the aerials that are on the right, you can see from 2010 at the top down to 2022 at the bottom, it's actually, the properties improved quite extensively with, with, give compliments to my client for the cleaning up the site before, and you can see how it was being used as a contractor's storage yard, and it's just one of those scenarios, you, not enough due diligence, admittedly, and, but now he's trying to do the right thing to, to get it all into place. So our specific request is to amend the land use designation from the AGR designation to this commerce, underlying AGR designation for a contractor's storage yard, and as well as the acceptable uses for, for the, the future. Doesn't change the tier, does not change the commercial cap, because it's considered not a, a commercial use, but more of a light industrial use. And then we do have a zoning amendment application that's, that's running in tandem with this that will end up going to the Board of County Commissioners at the same time as the land use amendment is, that's being reinforced by, by staff's recommended condition for the, for the application. Just to kind of walk you through, the aerial on the left gives you the land use designations around it, you can see the site that's highlighted there with the red box. To the, the area to the east, even the, the green corner that, that's at State Road 7 and Buington Beach Boulevard is a gas station, it's, it's been there forever, so it still has AGR land use designation, but it's vested to be there. The surrounding pink area is, gets referred to quite frequently at hearings, the Homridge property, which is a combined commercial low and industrial land use, there's various land uses there. The one that's immediate adjacent to us is a trash collection company. There are literally, you know, 100 trucks that are coming in and out of that facility on a daily basis, and throughout the day. So that's the area to the, to the east. The three properties to our north, northwest, and immediately west are all landscape service properties, where through the last several years, we've gone through those properties, and they're, 30% of that property is considered a commercial use for landscape service, along with their co-located nursery component. So we're completely surrounded by these commercial or, or industrial uses, with the most intensive being immediately to our east. Then you go to the other quadrant, the, the big blue block at the, the bottom part of it is Bethesda West Hospital, and then Faith Farms is the larger block to, to the right. Lost Farms, as pointed out there, is another application, and then you go to the right-hand side of the slide, there's one at the bottom left there called Sunflower that, that I represented, and it, it almost helped trip this discussion about the, the coming up to the commerce land use designation. Both of those, Lost Farms and Sunflower, were approved for industrial land uses, and with those, there were conditions of approval that through our application, we, we proposed voluntary conditions that matched those others, which controlled the uses that I can touch on here in a little bit. So again, the, the two columns here are what we have now compared to what we're proposing to go to. In the ag reserve, there's the potential just by FAR to have close to 33,000 square feet. Our proposal would increase that for the light industrial type of uses through this commerce designation that the county commission supported, which would give us a little over, the potential for a little over 98,000 square feet. And, and again, the, 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 this board doesn't look at site plans often, but the, and this is not a site plan, this is a conceptual plan that the staff asks us to provide of, how could it be developed to get to that square footage? The, the, the larger rectangular box there in tan is one of Ms. Bras' favorite uses, I say in jest, of a self-storage facility, and then the balance of it with the, the darker orange would be the warehouse building for our client as, as his, his, his building for having storage and ancillary office, and then the white is a contractor's storage yard. I want to emphasize, this is not our final site plan, but it's something that I wanted to show as what it could potentially be, and one of the uses that, that is being considered for this commerce is self-storage, along with the contractor's storage yard that my client would, would use the property for. This, I'm going to go through it quickly. It's, the, the policy at the top is this new policy that was adopted by the board to introduce the, the commerce designation into the, the comprehensive plan, and then, and then the idea of it is to provide some, some, the expansion of industrial employment needs in, in economic activities. I, a great job on the staff report, staff, the, you know, the, the background here of a consultant way back when actually recommended having nodes of areas like this, and now it seems like, which was ultimately denied by the Board of County Commissioners, but now it seems to be coming back that, that consultant had the right idea. These are the conditions that, that we, as the applicant, proposed, that the first one is, is really excluding all of the more intensive, heavy industrial type uses, that's not intended to happen here, and we're willing to continue to commit to that condition. And then the, the second condition is to eliminate all commercial uses with the exception of self-storage and landscape service. These are the two conditions that have followed the, the Sunflower, light industrial application, as well as the Lost Farms application, so these are the same. The, the, you'll see in the, the staff recommendation, or not. The, in the staff recommendation, there's a condition of approval that just requires us to, to take the zoning application forward with this land use amendment to the county commission at the same time. And the, the real purpose of that is to be able to implement these uses through the zoning process. That was something that staff was recommending, we're still committing to the two conditions from, from our standpoint, but I just wanted to, to clarify that. I think we're back to the beginning. So this is the staff's recommended condition, but again, I'm emphasizing maybe too much our, our own voluntary conditions that we're still willing to commit to. I think, you know, use, use-wise, the property has, has been used that way for a number of years, whether legal or not, this is bringing it into a legitimate legal use. It's surrounded by far more intensive, you can see it in that aerial, the intensity that's, that's immediately to the east of us and to the northeast, other components of that. Of the Homridge property has a landscape service business on it that's not one of the co-located, it's 100% landscape service, so they have trucks that will be going in and out of there as well. And then to the west is the Kaufman Landscape Service business that I, I represented as well, so that, they have 30% of their business that's actually on that eastern side, that's their landscape service, that's where their trucks are parking at night. We're not, not abutting any residential anywhere, and this has the access to the extension of Buington Beach Boulevard. So with that, we request your support of our application, and I'm happy to address any questions.
There may be questions after the staff's presentation. Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Travis Goodson for the Planning Division. Before I begin staff's presentation on this item, we wanted to take a moment to provide a very brief overview of the new commerce future land use designation that was recently adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. So the commerce flu was initiated by the board on February 2nd of this year, and adopted on August 25th, just a couple of months ago. It was a, came about following several public hearings and workshops related to the ag reserve, and the number of applications that have been submitted requesting text and future land use amendments for industrial in the tier. The text amendment established the new commerce future land use designation, and contains additional policy guidance for new industrial type requests within the ag reserve, and it is intended to primarily accommodate uses of a light industrial nature. So this slide shows the recently adopted ag reserve policy 1.5V. It contains the bulk of the new policy guidance for new industrial requests within the tier. Summarily, because I won't read through it all, but we'll have it for reference, the policy requires that all new industrial requests within the ag reserve be limited to the commerce designation and be subject to listed location criteria, minimum, maximum acreages, must have a concurrent zoning application, and submittal of a conceptual site plan, which is why you're seeing the conceptual site plans today, they're, as required as part of this policy, and a preserve requirement if the site is over 16 acres in size. This is a map we made showing the six requests for commerce flu that the Planning Division is currently processing, including a data, data table indicating each of the site acreages and maximum potential based on the commerce's maximum .45 floor area ratio. These applications were submitted in May of this year requesting the industrial flu. However, since the adoption of the commerce flu by the board in August, the applicants have amended their requests from industrial to commerce. You will hear four of these requests today, and the two others at a later hearing. So getting into the, this item, LTG Sports Turf, subject site is just over five acres in size, located on the north side of 100th Street South, approximately .13 miles west of State Road 7. There is a concurrent, concurrent rezoning application in process requesting rezoning from agricultural reserve to light industrial, and proposing contractor storage and self-service As Mr. Miller indicated, the site is currently under code enforcement violation for operations related to the contractor's storage yard. related to the contractor's storage yard. So the vicinity of the site contains a mix of non-residential uses and future land use designations. To the east is a parcel with the commercial low and underlying industrial for FCC environmental, outdoor vehicle storage, corner gas located on the hard corner, Atlas peat and soil to the north, and the previously adopted Lost Farms industrial piece to the north. Across State Road 7 are institutional land uses supporting Faith Farm and Bethesda West Hospital. And then there's two additional commercial low, underlying industrial parcels existing on the south side of Boynton Beach Boulevard. Another vantage point showing the subject site in relation to other uses in the built environment on this corner. So staff's assessment of their quest has found the site is compatible with adjacent and surrounding uses and land designations, located near a major intersection within the Ag Reserve, and is consistent with the existing development pattern in this area. Their quest is also consistent with the comprehensive plan as it meets the policy requirements to request the Commerce future land use designation. No preserve is required as the site is less than 16 acres in size. Public notification, as usual, Planning Division mailed notices to properties within 500 feet of the subject site and to interested parties, including some nearby residential communities and Cobra. We also sent an email to the Ag Reserve Interested Parties email that we've been emailing to for a while now, back at the beginning of this month. I do want to say we did receive a couple of letters from, oh, excuse me, sorry, that was the different one. Disregard, no letters on this one. Sorry. Staff's recommendation is approval with conditions. A motion today, should you agree, would be to recommend approval with conditions. And the proposed condition that we are recommending is that the land use amendment and the concurrent zoning application get adopted by the BCC at the same hearing. As Bradley mentioned, the, when they submitted for industrial, the applicant was proposing the same two conditions of approval that had previously been considered and adopted with the other land use amendments. However, staff has evaluated that those conditions were excluded because the CMR adopting policies incorporated a lot of that concern. However, should this board decide, you could move forward and propose that those conditions be incorporated. So this concludes staff's presentation, and we're happy to address questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up the, open up to public comments. I see that there's a couple of cards here, and as the chair is not here, I will call up to number one. Oh, how about that? Now we have three. I'll call up to number one, Ms. Linda Smith, and number two, Mr. Knight. You're right, I didn't read it, but it does, I do have a card from you. Ms. Smith, please go ahead.
Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. I believe the applicant showed, I think it was like Slide 2, that this project is also adjacent to some agricultural reserve and, you know, lots of landscaping and projects. They seem to lead us to believe it was surrounded by industrial and commercial. It also appeared that the applicant is counting on some approval of some of the projects that are actually coming up later this morning. This site is located west of State Road 7, which historically has been a line in the sand for the Ag Reserve. This site is, I believe it's got some preserve and miscellaneous agriculture, if I read the slide correctly. Currently, this site has a potential of a maximum of 32,000, which was shown in the presentation, and this proposal is going to make it 98,280 of light industrial, more than three times what is currently allowed, three times. It is hard to believe someone would buy property without really understanding what they're allowed to do with it. I don't know. Maybe they were just hoping that no one would notice, or county commissioners might change the requirements, which actually seems to have happened. This site, as mentioned, does have two open code enforcement cases. So now the property is asking for an amendment that will reward them financially, I'm assuming. What makes you think that in the future, this property would comply with our codes? Do I understand that this applicant is requesting the CMR designation to allow these conditions to continue? And I'm not sure I understand that. I need to go back to school. Again, of course, there is no indication of urban sprawl on the report. However, three times the increase in density, and the traffic analysis shows an increase of 154 net daily trips over the current maximum, but somehow this still meets Policy 3.5D. I need to go back to school for math. I am asking you to please deny. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, go right ahead.
I'm sorry, it's Mr. Martin.
I apologize. I can't read the writing. It's Martin.
That's okay.
Mr. Martin, and I know who you are, too, and I apologize for that.
I admit to having terrible handwriting. I should have been a doctor, but.
I'm going to start your three minutes again. Hold on.
Okay, no problem. Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Luxet Group of the Sierra Club. I want to first acknowledge Linda Smith, our chair, who spoke before me, and I agree with her comments. The basic problem we have, and we've been, of course, fighting all these changes to the Ag Reserve, is because, you know, it's changing the character of the Ag Reserve. And, you know, one individual change, I mean, we really don't think that the Ag Reserve should be, have a Commerce designation. I mean, obviously, the County Commission has allowed that. We think it means more traffic, more light, more disturbance, less agriculture, and more compaction of the soils, less opportunity for permeability, and ultimately, during storms, more opportunity for flooding, because these sites are obviously going to become much more developed. And it's really going to open the door, because what will happen is this property owner is going to get this approval, and then they're going to come back, and they're going to want more. And that's what's going to happen with all these. They're going to want more, they're going to make it more and more intense, more commercial, because once you give them commercial designation, then they're going to want more uses. And I think the end result is, you're no longer going to have an area where the people who bought out there to live in what they thought was an agricultural area with some low density are not going to have what they purchased. They're going to have a high-density area with a lot of traffic, and we see what happened with Hurricane in Naples. When, and, you know, all the experts say the same thing. Florida just allows development in places where it's really inappropriate. Now, this is, originally was wetlands. All this area was wetlands. It was all most likely cypress trees. And, you know, it became agriculture, it, the soils became more compacted. But even agriculture at least allows some permeability, some holding of floodwater. But once you begin commercial, and it's all concrete, and it's warehouses and offices, well, it's not going to hold any floodwater. And the assumption being that the canal system, the drainage system will always work, may turn out to be false. And so, you know, where's the resiliency analysis? Where's the long-term look at what the ultimate effect is going to be on the people who bought out there and live out there today? So we encourage you to deny this. We're not hopeful, but that's our recommendation. Thank you.
Question.
All right. I think that's all of our public comments. So any questions for the applicant or staff? Commissioner Vineker.
Yes, I have a question. Technically, does this application qualify to request the CMR? And the reason why I'm asking, you say yes, but I'm reading this paragraph here, that it has to be located with, first of all, it doesn't have a Boynton Beach Boulevard address. It's on 100th Street South. But it says here, it must be, the location must be located with frontage and access on State Road 7, Atlantic Avenue, Boynton Beach Boulevard, or have access to these roadways through an existing commercial or industrial site. So it's access on State Road 7, Boynton Beach Boulevard, access on 2, the access is on 200th Street. Do you consider, is this considered Boynton Beach Boulevard corridor, or how do you, you know, is this CMR designation on 100th Street?
So the rest of the policy, if, reads that it, for sites located west of State Road 7, they have to have a common border with a commercial or industrial future land use designation, which the site is right adjacent to CLIND. So that's how the site meets that criteria.
Okay, it meets that criteria, but if it's not on, if it does not have access on to Boynton Beach Boulevard, because the access is on 200th Street, or it has to have access to the roadways through an existing commercial or industrial site, and that doesn't have that. So it qualifies because you're considering 100th Street, Boynton Beach Boulevard. Is that what you're doing? I just want to know if that's what you're doing.
So that second sentence is meant to be like an exception to the first, so. It's like, in addition to that, those State Road 7, Boynton, and Atlantic, these other sites are also eligible for Commerce.
Yeah, okay. I understand it says or. It says or have access through a commercial or industrial site, but the first part said it has to be located with frontage and access on State Road 7, and its frontage is on 100th Street. So are we considering this, the Boynton Beach Boulevard corridor that CMR can be asked for in an application?
The second sentence of the policy that states that sites located west of State Road 7 must share a common border with a property with commercial or industrial future land use. So that is why we've determined it's eligible.
But that's also, it doesn't say or. It doesn't say or state, or, I'm not going to argue this anymore, but it doesn't say or sites located west of State Road 7. That's just another, another criteria that needs to be met. Can the attorney just explain that?
Take a look at this here. All right, what are we looking at?
Number two.
Number two.
There's two statements there.
This is a site located west of State Road 7, has a common border. Yeah, it's, I think it's pretty clear. It's, it's.
Yes, it's very clear. It has to have a common border, and it does.
Yeah.
The first sentence, it says it needs to be located on those, or have access to.
The first sentence has nothing to, this sentence is independent and applies to sites located west of State Road 7.
And this is west, yeah, that second one is located west of State Road 7, but the first sentence says located with frontage and access on State Road 7, or of course, Boynton Beach Boulevard, so, or have access through an existing commercial industrial site, which it doesn't, okay. But the first statement says located with frontage and access on State Road 7, Atlantic Avenue, or Boynton Beach Boulevard. The access for this parcel is on 100th Street South. That's all I'm asking. Are you considering this 100th Street South part of Boynton Beach Boulevard?
I, no, no.
No, okay.
The site is located west of State Road 7, and therefore must share a common border with a property with commercial or industrial future land use, which it does, so it qualifies.
Commissioner Roth.
If I might, Chair, thank you. Interesting, Commissioner Vineker, because as I looked at the map, I made a leap of faith that Boynton Beach Boulevard to the west at this location was 100th Street South, and that it was being viewed as the access on to Boynton Beach Boulevard, because that is, in effect, the continuation to the west. I might suggest, and perhaps this wasn't anticipated, when the Commerce FLU was generated and voted on, but perhaps this is a little glitch that, you know, if the access is on what is, in effect, the continuation of one of those major roads, Boynton Beach Boulevard, Atlantic, whatever, that that be considered comparable. When I looked at the map, I said, okay, it's Boynton Beach Boulevard, but to the west, even though it's called 100th Street. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Bros.
A couple. Where did we get, go from .15 FAR to .45? Because we're in the Ag Reserve, wasn't there any play as far as maybe doing something a little less? How did we get to that .45 FAR?
It's the same FAR as allowed in industrial, so we just utilize.
Industrial that's not in the Ag Reserve.
Well, industrial is allowed in Ag Reserve, yes, was.
All right, I take your point. I'm, and Bradley has assured us that they are not going to build a 90,000-square-foot storage, a three-story storage facility, you know, but it still makes me nervous that he does have the potential, that the landowner can sell the property, say the turf business, something else gets invited and they go in the toilet, and somebody wants to build a 90,000-square-foot, three-stories self-service storage, which you say is allowed, it's on your list of allowed uses, you know, but the thing is, a self-storage facility is not an economic base. It's not an employment center. It's basically, and it, I mean, there's three people that are employed for a storage facility, and that's for eight-hour shifts, so they can make sure that, you know, it's a secured, you know, location. You know, how can we be comfortable? Well, they have to go through the zoning process again if they want to do this 90,000-square-foot storage facility west of 441.
That's a good question, yes. And everything today submitted was conceptual. It's still subject to going through the zoning approval process, which is reviewed by 18 different county agencies to ensure that all the requirements can be met. The code requires a lot of different pieces and parts, and so it's the maximum potential, but what actually gets built on-site, depending on parking spaces and fire department and all that, it may be significantly lower.
So if a future landowner, say this person sells it, he will have to go through all those hoops with all those departments and everything before he can actually build a 90,000-square-foot, three-story office, storage facility?
If the 90,000 gets, goes through this zoning process right now, and then it never gets built, it becomes an active site plan that somebody else could use should the site be sold and developed. But if that does not happen, and an applicant wants to come back and build it, then it would have to go through that zoning process again, yes.
So would it help if somebody were to say, can you keep that square footage to a much lower square footage, say 30,000 square feet? Is that a condition of approval that could be requested, or is that not doable?
Yeah, I mean, I believe the Planning Commission, and I'll have Darren say if I'm speaking poorly. You can, you could make a condition that would limit the number of square feet of the, of a particular use.
So as the, as the Land Planning Commission, we could request, because it is west of State Road 7, not even on the corner, west of State Road 7, we could request that a condition of approval be put on that the square footage not exceed, say, 30,000 square feet?
Yeah, I would see, yeah, it's your discretion. It's, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? No? WebEx, Commissioner Pardue Van, any questions? Hearing nothing from our WebEx attendees, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Stopek, what's your, I'm sorry?
A comment from the public?
I thought we have already done our, so no additional public comments on this matter, sir.
Did you, did you hand in a card?
No, no, it's a comment based on your discussion.
Yeah, so unfortunately, we.
I feel very strongly that that's a legal factor that you're.
Yeah, so as far as the applicant goes, unless you all have any questions for the applicant, I think we need to take this to a motion. So do you have, Vice Chair, do you have a question for the applicant?
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, then, Commissioner Stopek, what is your motion?
.................................
Turn on your mic.
Yep.
Sorry. Yes, a motion to approve with the conditions set forth by staff.
All right, and second by Commissioner Pompey. Is there any questions or unreadness before we vote?
I have a question.
Sure.
Not looking, not finding it right now at my fingertips. The staff recommends up to 97,000 square feet can be built on this site. Thank you. I, I have a question about, about the.
The motion.
Yes, about, about the, just, I understand people are considering, I guess, 100th Street going on to Boynton Beach Boulevard, which is fine if you want to do that, but there's a split road, it goes down to one tiny little road. We're discussing this now, so it goes down one tiny road, so, and now 10 times the amount of what's there now, and right now there's a pole barn, which is 9,000, and there, there's 10 times the amount of square footage. What about all of this traffic going out? It's a tiny road. It comes down from a split, two roads with a median, and in front of this parcel, which is on 100th Street, it's, it just comes down very small. So what did traffic have to say about this?
Well, we don't, I don't think it's appropriate to have that conversation, that we have a motion on the floor. That would have been.
That's part of the discussion. Okay, then.
Yes, ma'am.
You can ignore my question.
Commissioner, I think, with all due respect, I think your points were made very well and very clearly during the appropriate portion of the, of the hearing, so Commissioner Roth, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Well, again, this will be just sort of a Robert's Rules thing. Would Commissioner Stopek consider amending the motion to limit the square footage since this will be going through in effect concurrently with zoning? That would allay some of the concerns.
Not really. I think, I think the motion as it stands is satisfactory.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It's on. I think the motion as it stands with staff's recommendation is satisfactory. I don't, I understand where you're coming from, I just don't know if I'm comfortable modifying applications, you know, what people are thinking. In other words, they've submitted it in this present form, staff has given their recommendations in the present form, and I'm wondering just how proactive as a commissioner I would like to be to bring the parties together, if you will, to find that middle ground, I think that's their job. But having said that, if you feel strongly about it, I'll withdraw my motion, and if you want to reform the motion, I'm fine with that.
Well, whether I feel strongly or not, I, I would, I would like to be able to vote in favor of this motion, but I am concerned, especially with some of the discussion about how that road clearly is not as wide or developed as Boynton Beach Boulevard, and the environmental concerns of 90,000-plus square feet. So I think it is within the purview of a land use board to consider reducing the square footage and sending an approval, but with that restriction. Then I, then I would feel more comfortable.
Again, you know, my concern is, and I hear and respect what you're saying, the road is the road. The road's been there for a long time. I don't know that there's any plans to change the road anytime soon, and it's not that particularly far west of 441, so I'm comfortable, again, as it's, as the motion I made, but as a deference, if you'd like, I will withdraw the motion, and if you want to submit a modified motion.
If you don't want to submit a modified motion, I think the proper procedure is just to vote this up or down. If it fails, then we can submit a different motion for consideration.
I would agree, Chair.
So is there any other questions regarding, regarding this current, current motion?
I don't think we're on question part, Mr. Chairman. I think we're on comment part, because the motion has been made.
Questions, comments, I'm sorry, I'm using, I kind of use those words interchangeably here, but sure, any comments or questions, yes.
I am in support of this, in support of this project. I understand the history, I understand that there has been code enforcement issues, the owner has cleaned up the property substantially, I don't have a problem with the use that the owner is using it for right now, which he has in the past. This is basically trying to iron out some of the details and requirements from the county, and I don't have a problem. My problem is the potential. This is like, you know, you can walk into the Everglades, Loxahatchee Wildlife Refuge from this site. You know, do we want to allow a 97,000 square foot, you know, storage facility that's going to bring the public west of 441 in the ag reserve, you know, to store their, you know, furniture they don't want anymore? Is this really, you know, can't we limit it? I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve the project with a condition of approval that in the future, no square footage over 30,000 square feet be built on the property.
I'll support the substitute motion.
Point of order, Chair. We have a motion on the floor. Motion has to be voted upon prior to, correct?
He withdrew his motion.
He actually didn't, kind of equivocated on it, and so.
If a substitute, and I'll let Darren jump in, but if a substitute motion is made, the substitute motion is actually voted on first.
Okay, but.
That is correct.
He didn't withdraw his motion, so.
No, he did not.
Right, right. So at this point, we'll take a vote on the substitute motion first, see where things lie with that one. If it's successful, then the conversation ends. If not, then we're back to Commissioner Stopek's original motion, yes?
So can you clarify the condition? It would be 30,000 square feet of any use on the site, or are you specifically related to?
This is allowed in the Commerce Center language.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure. We have, just for housekeeping purposes, it was seconded by Commissioner.
I, I seconded it.
That's what I thought, okay. Yes, Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, just a question to staff. I just want to clarify this, and I, I thought this was something we talked about in the past. Are our approvals.
Is your mic, I'm sorry.
I'm just not pointing it at my mouth, because usually I'm loud enough for people to hear. So usually, and again, I thought we clarified this in the past, aren't our approvals site plan specific? In other words, what's being presented is being approved, and if they come up with a new plan, then they have to come back again? Am I incorrect on that?
Vice Chair, I think, just to be consistent here, I don't think this is the appropriate time to ask that question. I think it would have been more appropriate to ask before the motion's on the.
Then I will make the comment that I understand that our approvals are site plan approvals for the site plan that's being presented. I don't think that everybody who comes, you know, unless it's been approved by, I think they said, I don't know how many other boards, I don't think they can get to come back and say, now we're going to build 98,000 square feet without getting the approval of all those other people. I think we're site plan specific, which is why I don't think our approval of this makes, opens the door for somebody to come in and build a 98,000 square foot, three-story facility. If I'm incorrect, certainly you can respond. I was hoping to ask staff to make sure that I got it right.
I do feel like I need to clarify that. So the planning commission is weighing in on land use level decisions, not site plan, site plan specific. So the condition that, or the cap that was included in the staff report of the 90, roughly 98,000 square feet, if that motion was made and approved, that would be the recommendation, but there's not a vote on a specific site plan at the planning commission stage.
Chair, if I might.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. Yes, so within land use with this substitute motion, we're changing 97 to 30,000, and the applicant said from the beginning, this is not a specific site plan, this is a conceptual plan, so I think it falls within the purview of a land use board. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions before we call the vote? All right, precious, maybe do a roll call vote, please. And I guess restate, just so everybody's clear, we have the substitute motion currently on the, on the floor, which caps the square footage at, is it 30,000?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Laurie Vinegar?
Yes.
Penny Pompey? Spencer Siegel? Dagmar Bros?
Yes.
Sarah Pardue? Carly Harper Larson?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
David Searle?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson? Nine to one, motion passes.
All right. So at this point, then, we can move to 3B3, which is the Moore &amp; Connolly Commerce Project. We have Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture presenting on behalf of this applicant. Let's afford them 20 minutes again, Vice Chair.
Good morning, Chair and members of the planning commission. I'm Heather Waldstein. I'm with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture at 3910 RCA Boulevard in Palm Beach Gardens. I'm here today representing the property owners of the property located at 9819 State Road 7 in Boynton Beach. We are requesting a future land use amendment from the agricultural reserve to the newly adopted future land use designation of commerce. The good news is, the 3.41 acre site is located west of State Road 7 and has access and frontage to State Road 7, just north of Boynton Beach Boulevard. Mr. Connolly, one of the property owners who's here today, has been the owner of this property since the late 1970s, and he leases it to a dispatch service for car transport. The existing dispatch use is consistent with the allowable light industrial uses of the requested Commerce land use designation. The land use designations surrounding the site are agricultural reserve to the north, institutional and institutional with underlying agricultural reserve to the east across State Road 7, and commercial low with underlying industrials to the south and west of the The project site is surrounded by compatible uses, with a chipping and mulching facility to the north, and then just across State Road 7 to the north and east of the site is the Faith Farm Ministries Long Term Residential Recovery Facility. Also across State Road 7 and directly east of our site is the Baptist Health Bethesda West Hospital. South and west of the site is a landscape service, outdoor vehicle storage, and dispatch office. Finally, as presented just moments ago, the site highlighted in blue and south and west of our project site is currently in the process for a future land use amendment to Commerce. Since you just heard a presentation on the Commerce designation, I will spare you the details of that, but I would like to point out that we are requesting an, oops, I'm sorry, we are requesting an FAR of .02. We are proposing a straight zone, straight rezoning to industrial light. Our project site has access and frontage on State Road 7, and the project site's 3.41 acres in size and does not require a preserve area. Our concurrent zoning application was submitted on July 20th of this year. This slide shows the existing properties located west of State Road 7 with industrial future land use designations, which include the County Line Feed Store, Rio Poco Commercial Plaza, Homridge Nursery, Wawa and Office, Sunflower Industrial, and LAS Farms. In addition, west of State Road 7 are properties with industrial type uses, and those include Four Points Market, AmeriGas Propane Facility, Range Line Feed, Winfield Solutions, Bednars Farm Fresh Market, and various packing houses. As required by the policy for the Commerce future land use designation, we have provided a conceptual plan which details the existing layout of the site, which is to remain. There's an existing approximately 4,000 square foot dispatch office building located in the northeast corner of our property. That building is separated from State Road 7 by a surface parking lot for the office use. Behind the screened fencing and landscape is an outdoor storage area to be used for the transport trucks when not in use. In summary, the 3.41 acre site is located west of State Road 7 with access and frontage on to State Road 7. A concurrent request for a rezone to industrial light was submitted in July of this year, and the project site is surrounded by similar type uses. In keeping with staff's recommendation for approval, we respectfully request a recommendation of approval to amend the future land use designation from agricultural reserve to Commerce. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation from staff?
Again, Travis Goodson with the Planning Division, this is Moore &amp; Connolly Commerce. This is a 3.41 acre site located west, on the west side of State Road 7, approximately two-tenths of a mile north of the intersection with Boynton Beach Boulevard. The applicant's requesting to amend the future land use from agricultural reserve to Commerce with an underlying ag reserve. There is a concurrent rezoning application in process, requesting rezoning to the light industrial zoning district, and a proposed use of vehicle dispatch, outdoor storage. We've seen this slide just previously. This is the surrounding area, and as you can see, the location of the LTG Sports Turf that was just adjudicated to the southwest. The site is bordered on the south and west with Homridge Nursery, which supports, old Homridge Nursery parcel, with a commercial low industrial land use that supports the FCC Environmental and Landscape Service Company. To the north is the Atlas Peat and Soil, and then further north is the other industrial with underlying AGR parcel for LAS Farms, and across the road, institutional uses for Faith Farm and Bethesda West. Staff's assessment, and this future land use request for Commerce, it's adjacent to in the vicinity of existing non-residential uses and land uses located near the major intersection of the ag reserve, consistent with the existing development pattern. The site is currently developed and with the, the vehicle dispatch use. Consistent with the comprehensive plan, the site's eligible to request the Commerce designation as it meets the policies. No preserve is required as the site's less than 16 acres in size. Planning Division mailed the 500-foot notices and interested party notices, and included this item on the ag reserve interested parties' email as well. Staff's recommendation is approval with conditions. The one condition that staff is proposing is relative to having the future land use amendment and the zoning application to be considered by the BCC at the same public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three public comment cards. Ms. Linda Smith, would you mind approaching podium one, and James Knight, please approach podium two. Mr. Martin, once Ms. Smith completes her comments, you'll be at one. Good morning again, Ms. Smith.
Good morning. Starting to sound like a broken record, and I apologize, but it's a busy morning. Linda, Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. Again, this site is located west of State Road 7, which historically has been a line in the sand for the ag reserve. I'm not quite sure how any development west of State Road 7 could be considered good It did indicate that there's ag use to the north, but my question is, for how much longer? It seems like this area is just being taken over bit by bit. I believe this site is already under a code enforcement violation, but that was not discussed at this, so I apologize if that is an error. The site uses on the property is commercial parking lots and storage, which are not allowed in the future land use designation, and I admit, I probably need to go back to school. It just seems like we're trying to expand an existing problem with an amendment. The traffic analysis does say that it meets the maximum potential. All right, so we get to the maximum allowable traffic in an area that has too much traffic. Urban sprawl analysis indicates that there's no urban sprawl, and my question is, how is that possible with an additional of 66,843 square feet of light industrial in an agricultural preserve? Site-specific land use changes may seem minor, but these changes result in a cumulative impact that will shape our future landscape and our future quality of life. Please remain steadfast to the growth management principles set forth in the comprehensive plan governing the ag reserve. Please deny. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Mr. Knight.
Morning again. Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. I'll be very brief. I support this. It meets the criteria of the Commerce. I would throw in there, though, that if you look at FCC Environmental, and if you look at the Top Cut Lawn Services that are there. at the top cut lawn services that are there, most all these people are developing far less than the allowed square footage on the sites. And I think you'll continue to see that, and this is also clearing up a lot of the issues that you have in heritage farms and other places by putting the light industrial type uses on a major thoroughfare, basically a highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Martin.
Good morning, Chairman and Board. Drew Martin, on behalf of the Locksatchy Group of the Sierra Club. I mean, the Sierra Club is trying to preserve what we think makes Palm Beach County livable. And, you know, we felt that State Road 7, that we should not be putting anything on the west side of State Road 7. It's the buffer of the Locksatchy Wildlife Refuge. We had a lot of, you know, code enforcement problems with using these as parking lots for, you know, landscaping services. I know staff has been working on this for many years, but the real issue is what's the long-term benefit to taking this land away from agriculture and nature and making it industrial or commercial? And that's a question that is long-term about what is the best thing for the county in the long run. Now unfortunately, in these meetings, even though we're called, your group is called the Planning Board, really, all these issues are not long-term. You know, there's no real planning, and when the county does the comprehensive plan and they have a plan, then it gets violated. We have so many, you know, now the legislature allows anybody to basically change the comprehensive plan anytime they want. I mean, we can't even get a break. We have to, we have to come here on a regular basis because there are so many developments going on, and I think the result is we really don't have the good planning that we should have, and that's what concerns me. And when I look at what happened in Naples and Fort Myers, when they, you know, they didn't really plan for what happened because they allowed development in all these areas, I just wonder if allowing this continuous development west of State Road 7 and not allowing, you know, agriculture and very minimal uses that don't put a lot of stress on the roads, the traffic, the light, wouldn't be better than these continual increases? And all these developments are basically kind of, you know, the camel's nose under the tent. They, they look like they're not a big deal. They look like they're not going to make a big difference, but I just have a feeling that a lot of these landowners are going to come back, they're going to be back in a couple of years with more intense application requests once they get these designations changed to something other than agriculture. So I recommend deny. I'm not hopeful, but that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff or for the applicant?
No.
Yes, Commissioner Roth.
This is not landscape services. This is a dispatch transfer piece of property. I mean, if anybody has ever driven by this, you would drop your jaw to know that this is going on in our ag reserve. But, this is also, okay, I'm trying to find a question. What's my question? Are dispatch stations that generate a lot of traffic actually considered a light industrial use in a Commerce center?
I was just looking for the policy. Some of the industrial policies in the plan have been updated with examples, and in the examples of, let me see, this is policy 224D industrial uses, where it breaks into light industrial and heavy industrial. The sentence ends with examples of light industrial uses include storage, warehouse, research, laboratories, dispatch. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any follow-up, Commissioner? Commissioner Roth?
Thank you. There's a square footage attached to this. Could a motion include a reduction in a square footage potential?
Similar to the previous-
Similar to what we just did.
That would be at your discretion.
And that would be appropriate for this body to do. Thank you.
On Webex, Commissioner Van or Commissioner Pardue, do you have any questions for the applicant or for staff? All right, I'm going to take that as a no. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Roth?
I move to approve this with the conditions stated by staff, but in addition with a maximum allowable square footage of 30,000 square feet.
Second by Commissioner Searle. Any comments or questions regarding this motion? I have a question, Commissioner. What is to be gained by limiting the size of the, of the construction?
It's a, it's a good and fair question, Chair. Thank you. I'm concerned always about the environmental impact and the encroachment west of 441. I'm hoping that, and, and we are faced with a new land use designation called Commerce, and the Board of County Commissioners has approved that, so we work within that framework and we entertain applicants who come forward with a proposal. But I think we still have a responsibility in terms of traffic, environment, just best use, not paving over everything, to impose a limit and to make a statement where we can. We have an allowable use, but let's, let's try to make it less onerous, and that is my reasoning for the 30,000 square foot.
Now what about if the, the business owner had chemicals on the site inside of this?
Well, I think-
The 100 square foot, please.
Mr. Goodson, yeah, I think, as I have reviewed light industrial versus heavy industrial, that would be excluded automatically. Am I correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you.
Can I have a comment on that? Anytime we've got a dispatch relating to trucking and logistics, there's always a hazardous material component that has to be included because semi-trucks, as well as any fleet vehicles, contain gasoline and diesel, as well as dev fluid, okay? And so everyone on the commission needs to be aware that dispatch services do have chemical properties associated with them, and that if we don't look at limiting square footage, which would then limit the capacity of that dispatch service, then you would not be able to limit any potential environmental consequences on that note.
And I had a question for you too as well, Commissioner Larson. In regard to this agriculture versus Commerce to agricultural comment, I know that you are very well aware of agriculture, agriculture here in Palm Beach County. In this, in this area that we frequently discuss, what percentage of, of land which was, which is zoned, which was used for farming, say 10 years ago, is no longer used for, for farming in that area?
We're looking at a tremendous amount that's no longer actively used for farming practices. However, I will have to say that as previous applicants have pointed out, and which I was a little surprised that this particular applicant didn't point out, that the agriculture that's sustained in and around State Road 7, like the packing houses and processing plants, are highly dependent upon, guess what? Dispatch services for semi-trucks to get the products in and out, as well as the nursery locations that are dependent upon getting those agricultural, very valuable agricultural commodities in and out. And there are also a large number of packaging, which is used in agriculture and both sides of agriculture. They're highly dependent upon that. Dispatch services are very well needed, and it is an appropriate need for this particular site, in my opinion. However, it shouldn't be exclusionary to think that this particular use would not have chemical and hazardous chemical properties associated.
So you support this motion, I would presume, because you believe it's a reasonable balance between the environment and also the necessity of having the dispatch in this area?
I do, wholeheartedly, yes.
Any additional questions before we vote? All right, at this time, we'll take a roll call, Precious.
Barbara?
Yes.
Lori Vineker?
Yes.
Penny Pompey? Spencer Siegel?
Yes.
Dagmar Bos?
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
David Searle?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We now turn to the EJKJ Industrial Project, LGA 2023-044. Again, Jay Morton Planning will be presenting on behalf of the applicant. Good morning again to you, ma'am.
Oh, this is my first time.
Oh, I thought, oh, wow. I'm going to get in trouble now. I thought I just saw somebody that was about your height with your hair color.
No.
In any event, good morning. My apologies.
No, that's okay. Don't worry about it. Good morning Commissioners, I'm Lauren McClellan with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. On behalf of the property owner, I'm presenting the EJKJ Industrial application. The request before the Planning Commission is a change from ag reserve to Commerce with an underlying ag reserve. The 7.93 acre property is located on the west side of State Road 7 with access and frontage on State Road 7. This aerial, just to the south, sorry, just to the south of Atlantic Avenue. So this aerial shows the general intersection of Atlantic and State Road 7. You can see that the future land use designation for the property at the southwest corner is commercial low with an underlying AGR, that is the Wawa Commercial Plaza. And then to the northeast of this, on this intersection, is the existing Atlantic Avenue Industrial Corridor. And then to the south of us, we have the industrial AGR designation, which was the Sunflower recently approved by the Board of County Commissioners, and then the rest of the future land use designation around us is AGR. But now I want to talk about what those actual uses are on the properties. So again, to the north of us at the, at the southwest corner is the Wawa and Retail Plaza. To the south of them is the AmeriGas propane storage, and then kind of wrapping those pieces is the US Post Office. To the west of our site is the AmeriGrow Chipping and Mulching Facility. I have pictures. Sorry, I forgot pictures. Pictures say a thousand words, right? So there's the Wawa. And then here's the Chipping and Mulching Facility. So you can see the piles of the mulch and dirt, et cetera, in the background with the dust. And then to the south of us is the Sunflower Landscape Services and Nursery. Then going to the east side of State Road 7 at Atlantic Avenue, we have the recently approved West Atlantic Industrial Park, and then to the south of that is Dakota. So we've gone through this already a little bit, but just to let you know that we do have a zoning application that will be going to MUPD. I'm submitting that next week. I'm proposing to have a .32 FAR. It's going to be approximately 110,000 square feet of office warehouse. Again, it's going to be in MUPD. We have a shared border with the Sunflower to the south that has industrial on it, and then we also have frontage on State Road 7. The property is 7.93 acres in size. We're not going to be required to have preserve as we're less than 16 acres, and again, it's going to be submitted next Wednesday. So just in conclusion, we argue that the Commerce is appropriate for the property. It's compatible with the surrounding uses with the Sunflower to the south, the AmeriGrow Chipping and Mulching to the west. We have commercial to our north. We've got the AmeriGas to our north. It's very consistent with those, with those uses. It's consistent with past, with past BCC approval and direction. Your staff is recommending approval with conditions of the application. If you have any questions, I am available.
Thank you very much.
Again, for the record, Travis Goodson with the Planning Division. EJKJ Industrial. This is a 7.93 acre site located on the west side of State Road 7, just south of the intersection with Atlantic Avenue, requesting a land use amendment from agricultural reserve to Commerce with an underlying ag reserve. There is a rezoning application in process. As you just heard, it's to multiple use plan development, MUPD, so disregard the light industrial that's listed there. The applicant submitted a conceptual site plan that depicts warehouse with accessory office as the proposed use. As Lauren indicated, the site is in the vicinity of the intersection of State Road 7 and Atlantic Avenue where there are industrial land uses on the north and south sides of Atlantic, east of State Road 7, that pre-exist the adoption of the 1989 comprehensive plan and therefore the subsequent adoption of the ag reserve tier. Just to the south is the recently adopted industrial underlying ag reserve parcel for Sunflower, and to the, directly to the west is the AmeriGrow Chipping and Mulching Facility. To the north, the post office, propane store, and then the stop and shop with the, with the Wawa at the hard corner with the commercial low AGR designation. Directly across the right-of-way for State Road 7 is the AGR PUD of Dakota. Another aerial image of the site. Site is currently vacant. Staff's assessment is found the site is compatible as it's adjacent to and in the vicinity of existing non-residential uses, including industrial and commercial. It's located near the major intersection of the ag reserve, inconsistent with the development pattern. The site's eligible to request the Commerce designation based on policy. No preserve is required for this application as the site is less than 16 acres in size. Public notification, same as the previous two, this time with the exception of notification to the Alliance of Delaware Residential Association. Today's staff's recommendation is approval with conditions, and should you agree, the motion would be to recommend approval with conditions, that, or two conditions actually. One is the, one that was attached to the prior two, which, which would require adoption of this land use amendment by the board at the same time as the zoning application that is in process concurrently. There's also a maximum trip generation condition that is attached to this in order to meet and satisfy the conditions of policy 35D related to traffic impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. So we have four public comment cards. Ms. Smith, please come to podium one. James Knight to podium two. After Ms. Smith, Mr. Martin, you'll be on call at podium one, and after Mr., Mr. Knight is done, Mr. Walt Strazakowski, I hope I pronounced your name correctly, sir, please proceed to podium two. Good morning again, Ms. Smith.
Good morning. I'm still Linda Smith. I still live in Jupiter, Florida. Again, this site is located west of State Road 7, which historically has been the line in the sand for agricultural reserve. Just to note, vacant land is not vacant. There is flood control and wildlife. It is only considered vacant by a human definition. Currently, the site has a potential maximum of 51,815 square feet of non-residential uses. This application proposes 155,444 square feet. That is, again, three times more than what is currently allowed. Did someone make that a requirement for this morning? Because there is currently no specific policies to guide the location and intensity of light industrial uses, applications such as this could open up a site to a wide array of industrial uses, including heavy intense uses that may not be appropriate for the location. This traffic analysis indicated an increase of 470 net daily trips over the current maximum of 273, but again- But again, somehow this seems to meet policy 3.5D. I gotta figure out that math. Tell that to the folks that are waiting through multiple traffic lights in this area. Fire rescue also has an additional 82 calls per year. And looking at the site plan, if I was cynical, I would say, how long will it take for that area of the mulch burning, the western AGR property, to join with this project to develop for access to both State Road 7 and Atlantic Boulevard? Is this just another special case revision to the general rules that others in the future will point to and follow? So please deny. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida, support the application. And I just want to put this out there for Dagmar. Dagmar, I'm not broker on any of these properties that are coming through. Thank you very much, bye-bye.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Martin.
Good morning again. Drew Martin here on behalf of the Lock City Group of the Sierra Club. I guess, you know, my hope is maybe one of these you'll vote against. So maybe this is the one you're going to vote against. And I want to say, you know, the Sierra Club did support the Caning Factory, you know, we supported that because it was agricultural benefit and contributed to it. But I don't see where this particular proposal makes any contribution to agriculture. And it's on the west side of State Road 7. And it's, you know, from the picture, it looks like it's, there's a lot of vegetation on there. So it is benefiting the natural environment. You know, I just don't see the need for all this commercial. You know, if one of these applications had come in, you know? But really, what we're seeing is all these developers are coming at the same time. And I think they're going to get this, unfortunately, from what I see so far, which is that you've approved everything so far. And they're going to come back and they're going to ask for more, and they're going to ask for more intensity. And I think it's going to really ruin the quality of life out there in the ag reserve for the people that have moved out there and paid a lot of money. It's going to really increase the traffic. And State Road 7 is already, you know, starting to become very backed up. So, you know, I don't see if, you know, I'm glad I don't live out there because if I lived out there, I'd be really unhappy with these developments. You know, I just think that at some point, you know, there has to be the ability in Florida to say no to things. And that seems just not to be very difficult. It's very difficult to ever see anything get turned down. I don't agree with what the commission did to open this area up to commerce. I don't think the ag reserve should have been opened up to commerce. I think there were some opportunities where you could have done a variance. Maybe the, maybe the last thing you approved, maybe they could have done a variance for that if it supported agriculture. But I think a lot of this is just cement. It's development, I think it's going to become more intense over the time. We didn't support the other applications such as the Wawa. We didn't think, we didn't think this should be on the west side of State Road 7. We thought that should have been a buffering area. And, you know, it's unfortunate because I think in the long run, this is really going to harm the quality of life. It's going to reduce the amount of agriculture, and it's going to be the end of what has been a very nice area to live in. So again, I ask for denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Walt Strazakowski still here?
Yes.
All right.
Walt Strazakowski. Address 10461 Denoe Road, Boynton Beach. I live in the ag zone. I've lived here for 25 years. And I've seen dramatic changes here, which seem totally inconsistent, totally inconsistent with the original purpose of the ag zone. I'd like to remind the board and the staff that this was the original, this was the original size of the ag zone. And this is its current size. It's less than half of what it was originally designated to be. It was designated to be an area strictly for use for agriculture, not for commercial operations, not for industrial, not for light industrial, heavy industrial, or anything else. It's the ag zone. I really don't understand how this can, how this can happen right now. We're very upset as owners here, and I will be speaking for the next project also. But it's just a general comment that we're degrading this area, and this area needs this agricultural zone for a number of reasons. There are aesthetic reasons. Obviously, I have a vested interest as a property owner. But this agricultural zone is very unique. It has very unique soil composition, which only certain types of crops can be grown in. And it's providing these crops to the local communities so we don't have to bring them in. As we start bringing in these commercial and industrial, even though they may be called light industrial operations, it's a progressive slippery slope. It's setting bad precedence because neighboring properties can then be joined and pointing to the operations that are next door. I agree with the Sierra Club's position that this is a very poor procedure, and I would vote to deny this particular project amongst many others. Thank you for the time.
All right. Do we have any questions for the applicant or for staff? No? Anyone on WebEx? Commissioner Pardue, do you have any questions? All right. So I'll entertain a motion regarding this application. Don't I make a motion at once?
I'll motion, I'll make a motion to approve with conditions per the staff recommendation.
May I have a second? By Commissioner Stopek. Do we have any comments or questions regarding the motion before we vote?
Yes, please.
Yes, Commissioner.
I just feel this is too much square footage for, although this is a slightly larger parcel, I just think it's too much considering the traffic in that area specifically. So I will not be able to support it.
Are you inclined to make a substitution motion, substitution motion with square footage restrictions?
This is an interesting, thank you, Chair, for that opportunity. This is an interesting case because we don't specifically have an indication of supporting ag use on this property. Mr. Goodson, do we have such a concept of ag use being supported on this acreage under light commercial? Or maybe?
Yeah, I would like the agent to come up and perhaps-
Ms. McClellan, I'm sorry, I didn't ask at that moment, but yeah.
I'd like to get a point of clarification. So all meeting, I've been saying, once we call a motion, we should discuss amongst ourselves. But do the rules allow, well, it's not even the rules, Robert Rules doesn't speak to staff and applicants. But in any event, I'm not, I don't recall ever bringing staff or the applicant back into the commissioners' discussion once a motion is on the floor. So I guess, counsel, what's your position on that? I think that we should limit it to our individual conversation at this point. Questions should have been asked before the motion, in my opinion. So tell me what you think.
Well, I think it's the discretion of the chairman, frankly. I think that if you want to allow fellow commissioner to ask questions during this period, I think it's within your right to do so.
I like to be consistent. So I can't say on one hand, limit your, a lot of times over the years, we've had comments to you out when we should have been asking you questions, only to then say the same thing over again during the, once we're having deliberation as far as the motion goes. So with all due respect, I think we should limit it to questions amongst ourselves and then call the question. I think we had an opportunity to ask you all questions. We knew, anyway, we had those opportunities. So I think, then since if it's on me, that I think we should limit this to a vote or any continued discussion or questions that we may have regarding the motion on the floor. So are there any questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor? Yes.
May I ask of my fellow commissioners their understanding of what the 155,000 square foot facility use would be?
My understanding is the applicant already expressed the fact that they were going to build a office warehouse facility consisting of 110,000 square feet.
Thank you, I just wanted clarification, yes, thank you.
I'm not aware of the agricultural scuttlebutt that the facility would be used as a service provider to agriculture. You know, and talks around the area that the use for the facility would complement AGR.
But we have, some of us have had concerns about if we have an, a use set is aligned with agriculture, then we can accept the square footage. That's the point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
I didn't quite follow that, Commissioner. Can you restate that last part? You said the point you were trying to make is what again?
Personally, I struggle with the issue of light industrial use to the west of 441. However, we have a policy in place by the Board of County Commissioners, and I respect that. Therefore, I would like to limit the environmental, the negative environmental impact to the best of our ability as a land use board. I'd like to limit the traffic impact to the best of our ability as a land use board. And if one mechanism remaining to us is to reduce the amount of square footage, then I would urge us to consider that because we are seeing understandably a proliferation of light industrial applications under this new commerce use to the west of 441. And yet those concerns, the environment, traffic along 441, remain.
And would it, then would it not be good prudent then just to expedite this exercise to make the substitute motion? Because if it, if it passes, then the current motion on the floor would be moot. So if persons are so inclined, why not make a substitute motion so we can kind of get on with the business? Is that?
If you'd like me to make a substitute motion-
I don't like you to, but I mean, I'm hearing everybody talking around things.
That, right, right. Here's the, here's the, my discussion point on this, that we, we have had two applications already this morning. We've suggested 30,000 square feet on both of them. They're west of 441. This is west of 441, and I do, I do realize that a few months ago, this other just south Sunflower did receive a, they're almost like CMR, only they have, they had an overlay to make them almost like CMR, but they are the industrial designation. To be fair to this particular property owner who is sandwiched in between this, the industrial and the AmeriGrow and the Wawa, that I would make the substitute motion to approve the application with 50,000 square feet. And 50,000 square feet is not just a number I drew out of the hat. The fact is that they are allowed agricultural uses up to 51,815 square feet. So I think that's a good compromise. Keep it a little smaller. We're trying, we are making a point here. This is west of 441, this is across the line in the sand, but let's approve the application with the 50,000 square feet.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roth. Any questions or comments regarding the current substitute motion? Yes, Commissioner Stopek.
I wasn't inclined to go along with that because I think we're overstepping bounds a bit here. We should consider plans as they're brought before us, but Commissioner Vinegar's proposal makes sense because we have that existing number that's-
Is your mic on, Commissioner Stopek?
It is on, yeah.
Maybe bring it a little further.
I'll get closer, usually I talk loud as well. So I would support the motion as made by Commissioner Vinegar. I think that there's logic behind it, there's data behind it, as opposed to us coming up with arbitrary numbers, which I think is outside of our purview.
Any additional questions or comments regarding the substitute motion? Commissioner Roth.
Just a comment of appreciation, if I might, to Commissioner Vinegar. I was hoping, you know, I respect when something is in the neighborhood of a particular commissioner who knows the impact. So thank you for that substitute motion, which I will be supporting.
Anyone else? Commissioner? Kylie Harper?
I was just going to say, let's call it.
Okay. I guess we'll call it, call a vote? Roll call, please, Precious.
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Lori Vinegar?
Yes.
Penny Pompey?
No.
Spencer Siegel?
Yes.
Dagmar Braas?
Yes.
Sarah Pardue?
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
David Searle?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson?
I vote no on this one. No.
Eight to two, motion passes.
All right, so now we're to 3B5, which is the Boynton Land Commerce, LGA 2023-001. We have Jay Morton presenting on behalf of the applicant. Good morning.
Good morning, almost afternoon. I'm Heather Waldstein with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I'm here today representing the property owners and applicant of the property located at 8421 South State Road. The property owner, Mrs. Patel, is here today. Although I'm relatively new face to this commission, our firm has been working in the agricultural reserve for many years and have seen the many changes that have occurred over the last 20 years since the master plan was put forward. We've been a part of some of those requests to amend the future land use designations from AGR to commercial and industrial designations. We've also seen the changes that have brought more residents to the agricultural reserve. One of the goals of the master plan is to preserve and enhance agricultural activity. The request before you today to amend the future land use for this property will do just that. It will enhance the agricultural activity and support the agricultural activity in the agricultural reserve by allowing light industrial uses that will support the preservation and enhancement of activities. The subject property is a 15 acre parcel located on the west side of State Road 7, approximately halfway between Hypoloxo Road to the north and Boynton Beach Boulevard to the south. The Patels have owned the property for several years and have seen the changes in agricultural reserve and the farming industry, which has led them to the decision to request this future land use amendment. Our request before you today is to amend the land use designation from agricultural reserve to the newly adopted land use category of commerce. I'd like to take a minute to walk you through the surrounding uses to our property. But first, I'd like to point out that the requested future land use designation of commerce, we are requesting because we meet the newly adopted policy requirements of being located west of State Road 7 with frontage and access onto State Road 7. The property is also 15 acres in size and as such will not require a preserve area. And finally, our concurrent zoning request was submitted to zoning just a few weeks ago in September. So starting to the south and working our way around clockwise, the 8.2 acre property to the south is the Animal Adventure Park and Safari, and some of its residents include the furry four-legged kind. The project site's south property line is shared by the Animal Adventure Site for approximately 857 linear feet, which is about 80% of our south property line. Also south of our property is a single-family residence and airplane hangar in the Willis Gliderport community. Willis Gliderport is a certified airport, and this particular property makes up the remaining 20% of our shared south property line. Moving to the west of our site, which is also owned by Mr. Patel, is farmed with crops growing green peppers. To the north is a wholesale plant, nursery, and packing house. And further north is the Windfield Solutions Chemical Supply, which we understand is considering relocating. To the east and across State Road 7 and in the urban suburban tier is the recently approved and under construction Melrose Commercial PUD. And just south of Armon Place is a PB- POD. And just south of Armon Place is a PBC county-owned property. And then round, sorry, rounding out the properties to the east is the Melrose POD. Our project site, per the commerce policy location requirements, is located west on, west with frontage on State Road 7. This site identifies other existing commercial or industrial future land use designated properties west of State Road 7, which include the County Line Feed Store, Rio Poco Commercial Plaza, Home Rich Nursery, Wawa and Office, Sunflower Industrial, LAS Farms. Additionally, there are existing commercial and industrial type uses in the ag reserve, which are located west of State Road 7, and those include the list below: the Four Points Market, AmeriGas propane facility, Range Line Feed, Windfield Solutions, Bednars Farm Fresh Market, and various packing houses. The following quote comes from staff's report for this project, which states, "The western side of State Road 7 is currently home to many heavy agricultural uses in agribusiness facilities along its entire stretch through the agricultural reserve. Uses include packing houses, feed stores, the Bednars Farmers Market, transshipment uses, landscape services with nursery, chipping, and mulching, and other uses allowed in the agricultural reserve future land use designation." Typically, industrial is defined so broadly, but with the commerce land use designation, the allowable uses in commerce are restricted to light industrial uses, which are in some respects less intense and less impactful to those uses that are allowed in the agricultural reserve, which include chipping and mulching, composting facilities, light manufacturing, packing plants, research and development, storage, transshipment, and soil manufacturing. When we think compatible uses, we think of uses that are no more intrusive and do not have an adverse impact. Sorry, let me go back. The Board of County Commissioners set a precedent and policy when approving the Sunflower Light Industrial Project, which is adjacent to a single-family residential community. The precedent set is that light industrial can coexist with residential, especially when the county policies in place regulate noise, hours of operation, access, and buffers. In fact, the community to the south of our project site is a certified airport with, that includes residences as a secondary use. The signs around the community direct that airplanes have the right of way. Typically, airports are located in industrial areas to avoid impacts to residents such as noise. When we think compatible uses, we think of uses that are no more intrusive and do not have an adverse impact. Looking at the comparative noise levels, the most tolerable noise level on this list is normal conversation at 60 decibels, followed by increasingly louder and less tolerable or impactful, with airplanes being the loudest, at up to 150 decibels. The good news is that the ULDC regulates noise level, vibrations, odors, and outdoor lighting for light industrial uses. However, the code exempts airports and farm operations. With compatibility in mind, a lot of thoughtful consideration went into the site layout and design to help lessen any impacts to the surrounding properties. We submitted this site plan along with our concurrent zoning request on September 21st. While the land use designation would allow up to almost 300,000 square feet of floor area, we are proposing half of that with the proposed site plan. Ingress and egress is provided to and from State Road 7. The proposed use of the site for light industrial will include warehouse and office use that is supportive to the agricultural community within two buildings on site. In considering the placement of these buildings, we located the loading area at the center of the site to allow the buildings to act as, to act as buffers to the surrounding parcels. We also wanted to keep the loading operations screened as much as possible from the public's view on State Road 7. Additionally, between the buildings and their respective property boundaries, we placed the single and double-loaded parking aisles to further buffer the uses from neighboring properties. We have met with and presented the site plan to our adjacent, two adjacent and abutting neighbors to the south, as well as some other residents within the Willis Gliderport community. In our meeting with the neighbors to the south, there was a concern for how we were going to address historical drainage. We have since coordinated a meeting between the two abutting neighbors and our engineering consultants to address that measure that will be in place, that the measures that will be in place as required by the county to accommodate that drainage on our site. In summary, the project site is eligible for the commerce land use designation and meets the requirements of the newly adopted policy, with a proposed FAR of .26, a proposed zoning of MUPD. We have 15, a 15-acre site, and as such, we are not required to provide a preserve. And we submitted our concurrent zoning application on September 21st. In summary, our proposal will help to enhance and support agricultural activities. Farming has become very difficult over the, over the years, and this project and request will provide farmers with another option to support the farming industry. We respectfully request that you recommend approval for this project and request.
Thank you. Next up, we have Travis Goodson again on behalf of staff.
How did you know?
I finally read project manager on the thing.
Okay. So one more time, Travis Goodson for the Planning Division. This is Boynton Land Commerce. This is a 15-acre site located on the west side of State Road 7, approximately one and a quarter mile south of Hypoluxo Road. There is a concurrent zoning and rezoning application in process, requesting rezoning to multiple use plan development and warehousing proposed. This site is located in the northern end of the ag reserve tier and in close proximity to two other tiers. This is close to just south of the southern pocket here for the rural tier. That's the Heritage Farms neighborhood. And then directly across State Road 7 is an east, western boundary for the urban suburban tier. The subject site is surrounded primarily by agricultural and low dense, low residential uses. To the west and southwest are parcels with agricultural reserve flu designation. To the north are additional agricultural lands and parcels with a rural residential flu within the rural tier. To the east across State Road 7 are residential developments, including Melrose POD, Valencia Shores, and Savannah Estates further north. And to the south and southwest is the residential neighborhood of Willis Gliderport. This area shows the subject site and nature of the immediate area. In staff's assessment, we found that the request is, the site's located in a predominantly agricultural and low-density residential area and is therefore out of character with the established development pattern for this part of the agricultural reserve. That said, however, staff does recognize that the request is eligible to, the site's eligible to request commerce as it does meet the minimum policy guidelines related to commerce and does have that concurrent zoning application in process for review. There is no preserve for this one either, as the site's less than 16 acres in size. Public notification for this site, 500 feet interested party notices. We did receive two correspondence very recently. A letter from the Willis Gliderport community was submitted last night to staff. I believe a copy has been provided on the dais for you. And we also received communication from Thousand Friends of Florida, from Robert Hartzell and team. Both of those are in opposition to this request for commerce. Staff is recommending denial of this application. However, should this body recommend approval, we are recommending two conditions. One, the same as we've talked about before, that this land use amendment and the concurrent zoning application be considered for adoption by the BCC at the same public hearing. And also, a condition related to trip generation for traffic in order to meet the policy requirements for 35D. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you. We have a number of cards from the public. Ms. Melissa McCown, podium one, please. Linda Smith, podium two.
Good morning, Commissioner. Melissa McEwen, 1270 Southeast 14th Ave, Deerfield. I just wanted to share my support for this application. I've been to one of the abutting properties, the Animal Adventure. I love the place. It was very busy when I was there. And, you know, many families go there probably every weekend. I get their text messages on a weekly basis of the activities going on at this, at that place. And, you know, I didn't know prior, but knowing now that that's an airport community, I think it's a particular area, and I think the application is suitable. We spent a lot of time working with the commissioners over the past years and developing this commerce category. It's something that's needed for ag. It's needed for the residents. It's needed for the community that's, has grown out there in the ag reserve. We know the landscape has changed tremendously as a previous owner out there and how hard it is for, you know, historical landowners, at least, to have options and opportunities. And from what I hear, this landowner, Mr. Patel, is in ag, and he is farming and plans to use this operation for that. That's, that's great and admirable. And I hope that with staff's recommended conditions, that this application can be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Linda Smith.
Afternoon now.
Oh, dear. Still Jupiter, Florida. Just a side comment. I hope that the county commissioners agree with your previous reductions in the square footages as you've approved the other projects. And I hope you attend the November 6th, I think it's the November 16th commission where this will be transmitted to reinforce your votes, because I'm not sure how much teeth your recommendations have. I support staff recommendation to deny this project has the potential to negatively impact adjacent and surrounding agricultural and residential land uses and disrupt the established development pattern of the surrounding area, regardless of the industrial category. As the picture has shown, this project is surrounded by ag, low-density residential, and an animal adventure park. If approved, the Boynton Land Commerce would have a potential of 294,030 square feet. Let's round that to say 300,000 of light industrial on a site that currently allows 98,010 feet. So let's say 100,000. Again, it's this magic three times density. I don't understand what's going on today, but everything's three times its density. This is no small increase. Do we really want an industrial pocket in the middle of an ag reserve? I don't know what kind of requirements would require the industrial to stay agricultural in use. I think once that cat is out of the bag, it's out of the bag. This project is problematic. How does it enhance agricultural activity long-term? How do we guarantee that? How does it enhance the environmental and water resources? We have heard lately quite a bit about water resources. We certainly have been hearing about a lot of that on a lot of different projects, flooding, et cetera. How does this enhance open space for the surrounding properties or residential areas? This project creates a dangerous precedent that would gut the very purpose of this specific approval process by regulating it to a simple checklist without case-by-case considerations. So please join the staff and attorney, Robert Hartzell, to deny the Boynton Beach Land Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Strzokowski, podium one. Right there, sir.
No, 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 I want.
Oh, you, knock yourself out. If you want to go over to two, sir, I mean, you were closer. I'm just, everybody's changing the rules here.
Competition here. All right. Well, Walt Strzokowski, 10461 Denoe Road, Boynton Beach. I am a resident of the Willis Gliderport. Willis Gliderport was built approximately 35 years ago, around 1985. When that facility was built, this was all ag fields. By ag fields, I mean crops being grown. Now, why did the original owners pick this spot? Okay? Well, if you want to have an airport and airport operations, you need to have some space. And you want to have a certain safety factor built around you. So you don't want to have all sorts of particularly large buildings and large concentrations of people because there's a potential, obvious potential, airplanes have a certain danger factor. And so I consider this to be one of the most absurd of all the proposals that's been made today to locate this 300,000 square foot or potentially 300,000 square foot building right next to an active airport. This is an active airport that has large and small aircraft. There are helicopters. There's all different kinds of operations going on night and day. We have lighting for night operations, too. Now, I moved there in 1995, so I've only been there 27 years. But in the 27 years, I've seen an incredible growth in operations that have nothing to do with agriculture. I mentioned this earlier when I stood. This is an ag zone. I'm going to remind the board and the staff that originally, this was the ag zone. And now this is it. And we really need to stop this encroaching on what was initially developed and intended to be an open zone. Now, now we're talking about putting a, in a commercial, actually a light industrial facility right next to an active airport. This does not make any sense to me at all. So, for several accounts, first, positioning this property here, I should say, approving the request to have that operation there is inconsistent with the original purpose of the ag zone. It creates a danger, not only to the pilots and the people that are operating the aircraft. And by the way, this is an FAA-approved and licensed aircraft, airport. It is not just something where some people came together and said, let's fly airplanes here. We're not flying remote control airplanes or drones or anything like that. These are operating air, we're all licensed pilots.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Next, we have Henry Redding. Mr. Redding, I'm assuming that you prefer to, that's closer, so knock yourself out.
I need to use a map.
So now you want to go to two, or you said you need to use the map?
Can I use number two?
You, I'm sorry.
May I use number two on the right side?
Of course, because the one I asked you to go to initially. But I think you said you needed to use a map, correct?
Well, on the wall, so you can see it.
Okay. Well, I don't know how well they can hear you, but is there any restrictions to the, is there any restriction to the public approaching the map while they're making their public comments?
Well, we would need to hear it for the record.
Mr. Redding, you want to walk toward the map as you're speaking, correct?
Being here allows me to point out.
That's fine.
A specific problem that has not been brought to your attention.
Okay. Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
My name's Henry Redding. I'm a resident of the Willis Gliderport. I'm a retired airline pilot, last flying a Boeing 747. I serve as an expert testimony on a potential problem that I feel exists. I have over 37,000 hours flying aircraft over my career, which is over four years of flying. And I'm going to bring to your attention a potential problem with this industrial complex being somewhat in the approach pattern for this airport. Take a look at the map. You got the square box, and it's in the northeast quadrant of this airport. You've got the square box, and it's in the northeast quadrant of this airport. This airport is a 24/7 operation. It is heavy twin-engine airplanes operate in and out, day and night. The arrival from the east to the west has a, if it's allowed, will have this commercial property of about 300,000 square feet that has to be lit up for security reasons, and that will have a lot of lights. It's only 380 feet north of the runway. So imagine an aircraft coming in from the east, making an approach. Pilots are going to have their vision reduced for that transition from flying to landing. And this could lead to a potential problem, to an accident, and I'm here to point that out. It is my experience with these bright lights, the possibility of an accident is greatly increased for nighttime operation. The airport is approved for nighttime operation. It has runway lights and glide pass guidance. So everybody drives their cars now at night, and we all have the bright LED lights, and it's gotten to be somewhat impossible with all these opposing lights coming at us, and it's going to be like this, only it's going to be harder for the pilots. And I need you to take that in consideration. Willis Gliderport is not just some place to fly little tiny airplanes or remote control. It is a major airport, over 43 homes operating aircraft. Ms. Morton, when I spoke with her three days ago, has no clue about the impact of what this can bring to our airport. Reduced operation, who's going to pay for that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Susan Pauli. Please approach podium one. And James Knight, a podium, podium two, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Susan Pauli, 10865 Barn Road, Lake Worth, Florida, 33449. Okay. You people have made great policies, as exemplified by Palm Beach County being such a wonderful place to live, and it's outlined in all the land use policies. However, every so often, somebody's got to come along and do something that messes all that up. For example, the case of the 3B5. Land use policy 2.1. The county shall not approve site-specific use amendments that encourage peacemeal development or approve such amendments for properties under same or related ownership that creates residential parcels. This is a perfect example of that, okay? Moreover, there's an industrial park on Lantana Road that's been advertising for occupants. It can't get itself filled. So why do you need more industrial parks? Why? There's no demand for it, okay? And more importantly, back in the 1990s, you might remember, the county taxed the taxpayers for money to buy the agricultural reserve. And since then, it's been chipped away at and chipped away at with everything but agricultural uses. And you people, everything you've approved today points to that. Now either throw out the agricultural reserve, say it doesn't exist, and keep doing what you're doing today, or vote on the next thing, and how are you going to refund the money that you check the taxpayers for? Okay? Because this has got to stop. Everything you've done today has nothing to do with the agricultural reserve. All you've done is chipped away at it with commercial ventures. Okay? That's all I want to say. This is wrong. What you're doing today, if you approve this, it's wrong. It's just plain wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my God. I had like one minute left. One last thing. I live not too far from this. The Willis Gliderport is a beautiful little community. If you let that go, it's going to put a hell of a blight on the lovely little community to have like an industrial park right next to some lovely houses in a beautiful area. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we're permitted to do that right now. Definitely not until after we get through everyone else. We may double back, but I don't, I don't think so, but let's let all the applicants, persons speak.
Good afternoon now, James Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton. Couple of observations. First of all, I fly, I'm not a pilot. I've jumped out of a perfectly good airplane, and I'm going over the edge for Habitat for Humanity on tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. But this individual is a farmer. He's farming on the property currently, and I believe he's going to be utilizing the light industrial space for, to promote the farming on the property. There was a question about lighting and so forth, and I believe there's codes that require all your lights to stay on your property. You're not allowed to bleed into neighboring properties, and that's all part of the code. Also, it looks like that the airport, it runs east-west here, right? So you're taking off and landing. When you go to any airport, I go to Palm Beach International Airport, there's tons of light industrial buildings all around it and so forth, with numerous uses, offices, hotels, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't think that will cause a problem for this particular piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, sir.
Next up, we have Laura Serrano, podium one, and at podium two, Tom DiBucci, please.
This is Laura Serrano. I'm a resident, 91, 9140 acres. So even though there's residents here that have been here for a long time, there's also new residents that have just moved in, and for us, we also want to bring our small businesses, and we think this is a perfect example of how we can just promote employment and also bring our small businesses in, and a commerce park is exactly what is going to occur in the area. So I just want to put my five cents in. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom DiBucci. I've lived and worked in the ag reserve for the last 30 years. I'll talk about that in just a moment. I first wanted to thank each and every one of you for your care, your concern, and your commitment to the residents of Palm Beach County. Your hard work and efforts have not gone unnoticed, and wanted to thank you for your efforts. As I mentioned, I lived in the ag reserve for 30 years and also worked in the ag reserve as a real estate broker. As a real estate broker, I've done over half a billion dollars in sales. I currently have about $50 million in listings. I sold land to farmers, and I sell land for farmers. I sold land as little as one acre to as much as 100 acres. I sold to people for single-family residences, multifamily, to people who want to change their land to industrial. And in full disclosure, I did sell the land to the applicant. I sold land to people that want to do commercial. I sold to people that are using land for places of worship. I sold land to the county. I've also sold TDRs, and I think that's something that needs to be considered with this applicant, because he currently has the necessary TDRs for this site. I know that this is a hot subject, it's a hot topic, and there's a lot of emotions that are going back and forth in the ag reserve for 30 years. But today, I'd like to just separate the feelings from the facts. The fact is, the ag reserve is about 14 miles long, beginning at Clintmore Road and ending at Hypoluxo. From Clintmore Road to Atlantic Avenue, it's roughly about three miles. And now our county commissioners have no longer allowed industrial use just south of Atlantic Avenue, other than the applicant that was before you today. So now we're looking at somewhere around an 11, 12-mile strip, which many of that land does not have TDRs. And so the reality is Pandora's Box has been opened. According to the staff report, there's 10,758 residential units, 9,135 have been approved to be built on. You have 400 units that's approved at Atlantic Avenue. So the reality is there's about 20-some thousand units that supply 50,000 people. The people of the ag reserve need goods and services. So unfortunately, this Pandora's Box has been open, and as a resident at the ag reserve, I need to be able to enjoy commercial property to eat, or there needs to be industrial property to supply the goods to the residences. I am suggesting that you approve this site with conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mahendra Madem. Please come to podium one. And Drew Martin, podium two.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about this. I'm actually a farmer just south of this airport that we're talking about, and I've been farming for six-plus years now, trying to see light at the end of the tunnel, which means I'm able to make any profits from the agricultural activity that we are all talking about here today. I know we are saying, we are, we want to conserve this for ag purposes, and has anyone thought about what is ag, and whether this ag is actually feasible in this part of the world right now? No one is talking about that. And I want to bring this property, you know, I want to support what they're asking for, and they're trying to build something that will help in their agricultural activity, and if it does, I want to support that. And again, you know, giving opportunity, I mean, I know there's commerce designation that's been approved, or, you know, made available for the properties west of 441, and that's a significant change that I've seen, and thank you, you know, for all of you who have made that possible. It definitely supports the landowners who are primarily agricultural, in this agricultural reserve right now, and I would like to support this request from this landowner. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon. Drew Martin, on behalf of the Lockshead Group of the Sierra Club. I support staff recommendation for denial. I support the letter by Robert Hartzell, Law Associates, Thousand Friends of Florida, asking for denial. The reality is that I don't believe this landowner wants to continue with agriculture. I think that this is just the first step to open the door. Think they'll be back. But the reality is, you know, people say, "Well, is agriculture really working?" But everybody in here who doesn't eat, please raise your hand, because agriculture has to work. And people say, "Well, you know, where's it going to work?" Well, right now, you know, I served on the Palm Beach County Soil and Water Conservation District for eight years, and we were basically the group that, you know, helped operate the ag reserve. And I went out there and I saw that, you know, we have a lot of successful agriculture out there. We do have people operating, and that we are going to need additional agriculture. And I look around the country, and I see places like Arizona where they're removing land from agriculture, places like California where drought is really impacting agriculture, where the Colorado River isn't going to support it. Yet I, here in Florida, we have the water resources to support agriculture, and we have the land right here in the ag reserve. Now, the price of fruit and vegetables is going to go up, so people who may not today be able to make money, well, maybe, you know, not everybody makes money in everything they do. Maybe they need to sell to somebody else who wants to do agriculture, who can turn a profit. And that, you know, that's just how the business world works. So when people get up and say, "Well, I can't make money." Well, you know, I'm sorry you can't make money, but does that mean we should allow you to turn your land into a commercial development? I don't think that's a good argument. The next thing is that you've sat up here today and you've approved a lot of commercial, okay? A couple hundred thousand square feet, if my math is correct. So if anybody stands up and says, "We need commercial," clearly you have it. You know, we know that a lot of these commercial properties are vacant, you know? And so I don't see the huge need. We already have packing houses, and, you know, if this property was to be approved, then we should have turned all the rest down and approved this one and said, "Well, this is what we needed." But yet, we've already approved all the others. So we're basic, and this isn't going to require a preserve requirement, so I just think this is another camel's nose under the tent, and believe me, these people will be back, and they want to do away with all of it. Just give them enough time, and they will. Thank you.
All right. We have two persons who submitted emails, and I'll read them due to their brevity. The first is from Jeff Arnold. He said, "We strongly object to the town," oh, actually, this is for a prior, prior agenda item, got kind of shuffled in here, so I'll just add this to, to the record, but it was in regard to, I believe that was 2B, yeah, 3A1, I'm sorry, the Tidewater, Tidewater Project, so I'll skip that. The second one is in regard to the Willis, Willis Gliderport Property Owners Association. Says that Willis Gliderport is the community adjacent to and south of the above referenced land use change. It consists of 43 home sites on a private road with a private runway. A recent sale in 2018 was for $960,000. It's our understanding that staff recommended denial because introduction of the commerce designation on this particular site, which would allow for potential 294,030 square feet of light industrial uses would, quote, "introduce an intensity that is out of character with the existing land uses in this portion of the state, Road 7 corridor," end quote, then they quote something else, "presenting concerns regarding compatibility and the creation of an industrial park removed for other existing industrial and commercial developments elsewhere in the tier lends to an inconsistent development pattern, counter to county directions 2 and 4," parenthetically, "they say, "in contrary to the vision of the master plan, and have the potential to disrupt surrounding ag uses and preservation lands intended for the tier." Then they end the quote. The consensus at Willis Gliderport is that creating, that creating this spot zoning to industrial will have a negative effect on the desirability of value and value of homes. We have polled the 43 property owners at Willis Gliderport. More than half of the membership responded, and their response, without exception, opposed the land use change, and this was respectfully submitted by the president of this property owners association. We also received an email from Robert in Hartzell, PA, in regard to this matter, and they also oppose this, this applicant's application. It's a little longer, so I didn't want to read it. I'll just add that to the record. All right. Do we have any questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Roth, well, actually, Commissioner Brahms, Brahms put her hand up first, so Commissioner Brahms, then Commissioner Roth, and Commissioner Stope.
There were a couple references regarding the fact that this project will help their agricultural business. Is this a packing house?
For the record, Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. As far as help assisting in agriculture, we can have cold storage as part of the commerce use. So we foresee that being maybe a component of the light industrial uses.
And my next question is, under the Right to Farm Act, if that was really what you wanted to build, wouldn't you automatically be allowed to build something that helps your farm?
Well, it's a mix, it's a mix of uses. So you have office warehouse, you have, you could have cold storage, you know, the pesticides are stored in a warehouse with a small office up front. I mean, it could be any number of uses, so it's a 15-acre site. We're proposing about 2.26 FAR, which is about half of what is allowed on the property, and it just adds flexibility to the, there's a variety of uses that could be allowed within that commerce category. And one of those is assistance with agricultural production. The property owner owns this land, and he owns the land that's in ag production behind it, so.
But he already has a packing house on the property. That's what we're going to be build, that's what we're going to be tearing down and building on top of?
No, you're not, he does not have a packing house on the property. He has, there's some ag production, and there's a pumping station, which I think Heather mentioned, a large area set aside for pumping water underneath State Road 7, and the drainage is a significant issue, not only for the farming of- is a significant issue, not only for the farming of the peppers that occurs behind it, but a big, a significant question from those two property owners directly south. So drainage is an issue all around, and we're working to address those issues, so that's a significant part of the property as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roth.
Thank you, Chair. To staff, please. The difference of this recommendation for denial, I assume is, and I read your justification, it's because this is not abutting already existing commercial uses? And I'm gonna call spot zoning. You call it inconsistent, but yes.
So one point, and I will get to your question in a moment, but one point I wanted to make is, as the applicant said, it's correct, they are eligible to apply. Just like within the urban suburban tier, there are, you know, many, many different future land use designations, and just because something technically can go somewhere, there's still that site-specific evaluation to see if a certain future land use is appropriate at a location. So in part, what you referenced, and also just the general character of this area, was very different in staff's assessment than the previous items that you voted on. So it was taking that site-specific context into play as we evaluated each of the different requests.
Thank you.
There'll be a few more at the next meeting.
Thank you. That confirms what I'm thinking, and just for, again, for the public edification, because this is 15 acres and not 16 acres, there is no preserve requirement attached.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Larson.
May I ask Jennifer to come to the podium, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
To fully understand the impact of this property, as well as the fact that the Patels are significant farmers in our community, can they provide clarification, you as their agent, as to the amount of production their land currently provides for the county, and where that production goes to generalized brands, and if it goes to packing houses in and around our area? Because that provides input that I'm seeking as to the amount of economic investment that they currently have in the county, and would give me further clarification as to the direction of this smaller 15-acre parcel.
Well, Mr. Patel could not be here today. He had a conflict. I know that he farms in the area, he leases his land to farmers, but I don't have the answers to the site-specific questions. It's how much is in ag production, how much he contributes to the farming industry, how much of his farming goes to local plant packing facilities, but I would imagine that they would. So, I'm sorry, I can't answer those questions, Kylie.
Okay. So clarification, joint venture or straight lease? Because the difference in that is when he's leasing, he's not a farmer, and when he is in joint venture, he is a farmer. And that is clarification by the FDA and the USDA.
I do not know the answer to that either. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions?
Just a quick one for the applicant as well. Sorry. Kind of hitting around with some of my colleagues have been asking the same questions, or the same line of questioning. With regards to the site property, we already know he owns the adjacent 15 acres. How much more does he own going down that same line or in that area? If you know.
I know he owns the farms, the farm, the land behind him, directly behind him.
Heading west from the site property.
Heading west, yes, from the subject's property.
Yeah, we know that was mentioned earlier, that's another 15-acre parcel.
Oh, I think he owns, well, we can get back with you on that. I can pull it up on PAPA, or maybe.
I have it.
It's 10 acres. Staff is looking at that right now.
We believe it's 10 acres.
That's my question. An additional 10.
And going further west, because...
He owns 112 acres.
Okay.
Of farmland.
So, all right, well, this is more of a comment than a question, so I'll hold it. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Vineker.
Yes, I have a question of staff. Okay, this is, this is an application for a CMR, limited to its commerce, future land use. Now, there's 10 acres behind this property. If this obtains the designation of CMR, could the 10 acres behind it apply? And I'm going by staff's number two, under what, located with frontage and access on State Road 7, okay? Or have access to these roadways through an existing commercial or industrial site? Now, this would, would this 15 acres be considered a commercial or an industrial site? If it is considered a commercial or industrial site, then that 10 acres behind it could come back and ask to be CMR? But if, but if it's CMR designation, it's not considered commercial or industrial, so I would think that the 10 acres could not come back and ask for CMR. Can you please clarify that?
So there's no corridor that that site behind is on? I'm gonna have to do a little more thought into that question.
Well, it's specific, it clearly states in number two, it clearly states that, that would, besides frontage and access on State Road 7, which it would not have because it would be behind this 15 acres, this clearly states, "Or have access to these roadways through an existing commercial or industrial site." So my question is, does this 15 acres become considered a commercial or industrial site, or is it the CMR designation? The other thing is, sites located west of State Road 7 must share a common border with a property with a commercial or industrial future land use. So those are two things, two criteria that needs to be addressed, and what we're using here, we're using commercial and we're using industrial, but we're not using the CMR land use. So if it is adjacent to a CMR land use, can they come back and ask for CMR? Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to, with the 10 acres behind the 15. So that's my question.
So the site to the west is under preservation right now, has a conservation easement, and I think maybe that's why Brian came up to the podium. So there are additional hurdles, you know, they would have to find an equivalent acreage somewhere else in the tier and then do the, what we call the swapping of the preserve area, so there's...
And we have seen that before.
Yes.
We have seen swaps, so within the agricultural reserve, which is completely allowed. So my question is, that with the wording here, I think that number two needs to be tightened up a little bit before the Board of County Commissioners meeting, the way it states, especially for this and other projects.
It's gonna happen.
But, so, so is, so then the simple question is, is CMR considered commercial, or is CMR considered industrial? Isn't it a hybrid of the two? What is?
It's listed as one of our industrial future land use designations, so we have, we have regular industrial, we have commerce, and then we have Economic Development Center. So those are the three industrial-type future land use designations in the concept plan.
So when you are stating commercial or industrial, you are alluding to any one of those that it could be, that the property would be.
Yeah, that's the intent.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Any additional questions? I had a question, but I'm just waiting for, I always wait till everyone else has asked their questions. Commissioner Pardue, do you have any questions?
I...
Okay. Staff, how tall is the applicant's proposed building going to be if constructed?
They show on their concept plan 35 feet.
How tall? I mean, far as stories, I'm sorry.
Oh, just one story, but I can let the applicant further explain.
That's fine, because the Palm Beach International Airport is about two, three floors, stories?
Yeah.
Somewhere around there. So obviously, we can't really ask questions of the persons who have made public comments, but do you have any response to the gentleman who represented that he is some aeronautical expert? He stated that there would be a potential safety issue in regard to there being 24/7 flights in and out, and somehow, if I follow his logic correctly, what he was saying, that the extra lights, I guess, from the traffic or whatever could be potential distraction to the pilots, do we have any position on that?
Brian Davis, the Planning Division, I have very limited expertise on this, but I did do a project next to the airport years ago. There are FAA requirements for lighting and so forth that are out there. There is a requirement for lighting, I think it's like 199 feet or higher for, like, that's where you get the flashing beacon light, I know, towers and so forth. They have to make some consideration. There are a lot of things for like noise and approach paths. This is just off of it, and I know that there are some general concerns, and I know, and I understand enough about aviation, that if there's enough lighting that comes up off of it, it can create a glare issue and whatnot. But generally, that lighting is done under county zoning code. It's not done by the FAA because they're not directly under the path, but again, that's something that the applicant would need to look at and consider in going forward. There are generally rules, but I don't know any that specifically directly apply.
All right. Thank you, that was the only question I had. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny the application.
I make a motion.
Okay.
To accept staff's recommendation of denial of this project.
Second.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments regarding this? I see someone waving the actual movement. Okay, yes, Commissioner Ross. Yes.
All right. First of all, I want to thank Linda and Drew for showing up all the time and trying to put us on the right track. All of our other previous projects, they were cleaning up areas. It was infill. These were little parcels of property that had history of previous use, but it became code violations, and, you know, they were not bad approvals, okay? It was close to the intersection, there was industrial around existing already. This project is just plucking 15 acres on 441 and deciding to make it a commerce center. It is, there is no rhyme or reason to go mid-block. As a planning commission, we are supposed to look to the future, on how it's going to look in the future. For us to approve mid-block west of 441, a 15-acre commerce center that's gonna have two big square buildings that are just not compatible with the area, I think it would really be a shame. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Yes, Commissioner Stopek.
Thank you. I am also not going to be in favor of this project for a couple of reasons, but while I respect the need as an end-use consumer to have goods and services nearby, these are all B-to-B. I don't see a lot of end-user type of commercial entities coming to this area. But at the end of the day, the airport situation really tips it for me, and I don't think I'm going to be able to support this project. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? I would like to follow up with you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Vineker, you had a point?
No, 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 the clapping.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Stopek, can you elaborate on how the issue of the airport affected you?
Sure. You know, I used to live in Wellington years ago, so I'm familiar with the Aero Club, and the Aero Club is much more of a residential type of, and I had friends there, and some flew, some didn't. There, I've been living in Delaware for 23 years, but I do recall, I think within the last 10 years, there was at least one or two accidents in the Aero Club. So it's not outside the realm of possibility. Granted, what little knowledge I have of this glider port, you have a higher, lack of a better phrase, higher caliber of pilot coming in, because you've got, you know, twin-engine planes, you've got more experienced pilots, and so on and so forth. But at the end of the day, it doesn't fit in my world. It just doesn't pass the smell test, if you will. Some of the other projects that we've entertained over the last few months, I see logic, I see reason, I see both sides. This one, in my opinion, just doesn't fit. I think the airport, it's a pretty existing thing. It's been there for a long time. I think they have, there's some entitlement to that, as there's a lot of other circumstances. But putting a big building at the end of a runway, and the lighting issues, and, you know, you've only got east-west runway, you don't have an option, you don't have an angled runway, you don't have another angle of approach. So just for me, I don't think this is a good fit for this particular location.
And the building, and you say, having the building at the end of the runway, it's gonna cause what kind of, what, in your mind, what potential has?
In my mind, the lighting is an issue, and I understand where you're coming from. I understand that there's big buildings all around PBIA, there's big buildings around all the big airports, but you're also talking about a different level of aircraft coming in. You've got more advanced avionics, you've got more experienced pilots, you've got people that can fly in and out in the dark, you have people that can fly in and out during the day. I'd love to hear more from the pilot who's flown 37,000 hours in a 747. Those are the types of opinions that I respect. But again, based on what I've heard and in my position, I can't support this one.
Yeah, again, the issue, I think, with that is, I think it would have been, they would have need to be on the agenda themselves, but I don't think we should start protocol, start a new policy where just because we want to use the speaker to make a point for us, we have this person come up, we'll be here. I mean, I don't think that's a very effective way, but I understand what you're saying. And again, since technically we can't discuss these things, except now, this is why I'm asking you now to get better understanding on your position, as far as that goes.
And I respect the position, Chair. I mean, look, I've been an expert witness, you know, for most of my professional career, so I like to hear from experts. It's different between having a resident express an opinion or someone else express an opinion, but when you have an expert in the field that has information that is impactful to the discussion, and maybe there is an opportunity to modify the rules of the program going forward, that, you know, on those occasions, helpful if we had previous knowledge that they were gonna be appearing, then maybe we could have that opportunity to question them. But that's the kind of information I think would help all of us in our decision-making.
So perhaps if there is any future project and a person with an expertise, such as the gentleman spoke earlier, perhaps he or she would, should reach out to staff and maybe request additional time or whatever, so they be placed on the agenda. I'm just thinking, because again, I don't want this to be total mayhem here, so now I'm calling whoever, Mr. Knight, come up here as a real estate agent and tell us your opinion. He's an expert of this and that. I don't, don't think that's really appropriate, to be honest with you.
No, but...
I did have a thought, I did want to ask him a question, but on principle, I didn't. So again, maybe citizens who believe this is something of such import that you want to essentially testify as an expert, maybe do us the favor of reaching out to staffs and possibly being added to the agenda, so then, I don't know. Would that have worked in actuality?
So these are not quasi-judicial proceedings, so testimony is not taken, nobody's sworn. These are just comments from the public trying to influence policy decisions of you and the board. So I don't, I don't necessarily think it would be appropriate to have a cross-examine type situation where we're questioning them as witnesses. Now, if you, if you have a question for somebody who spoke, you know, I think on occasion it's appropriate, it's at the discretion of the Chair, but this is not, this is not a quasi-judicial proceeding, so.
All right. So I know that there were at least three or four people who did want to ask this gentleman a question, so, no, all three or four, you can't ask him a question, though. Where is?
Well...
He may have left.
The gentleman left.
Oh, well, good.
Problem solved, yeah.
No problem solved, then.
I can make a comment if you will allow me.
No, 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 I just knew it was in that general direction. I wasn't actually focusing on you, but thank you for the offer. All right, so any additional questions in regard to, yes, counsel?
Just a comment to follow up with that. You know, to keep this expedient, and we are volunteers up here, I would encourage that if the public considers themselves a subject matter expert, and we do not have a way to qualify whether someone indeed is a subject matter expert, I could tell you that I have a magic wand today and could bippity-boppity boo us out of here, and that could be the subject matter expert self, but there's no qualification for it. I would encourage that if the public feels incredibly passionate, as many of us on this board do on various subjects, that we take the opportunity to reach out to staff and to our board through an email format, and they may expound at length with resources and attachments, and then we can then read those as they're sent to us in our packets at least one full week ahead, and then when they prepare their three minutes of comments, we can then address our comments, because we have already established in our own opinions, if they indeed are subject matter experts or not.
Commissioner, you look like you liked that last part.
Sorry?
Looked like you affirmed it, you supported that.
Looked like you affirmed it, you supported that.
I was just thinking to myself that we should have more.
Can you use the mic?
About her magic wand.
Oh.
Bippity-boppity boo?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right. So again, we have a motion on the floor. I guess it's time to.
We do? No.
Did we get a motion on the floor?
Yes, there is.
That's what I thought, I mean.
I apologize.
No, it was, it was by Commissioner Bros, seconded by Commissioner Roth, I believe, right? Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So it's been passed, the second has now been passed to Commissioner Searle. But in any event, I think we've had enough discussion at this point in time. Let's, let's call the question. Roll call, please.
Barbara.
Could you please state the motion?
The motion was for denial.
Motion to deny, I vote yes.
Lori Vineker?
Yes.
Penny Pompey? Spencer Siegel?
Yeah.
Dagmar Bros?
Yes.
Sarah Pardue?
Yes, for denial.
Colleen Harper Larson?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
David Searle?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson?
Uh, yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So we now are nearing the end. Any comments, additional comments by the commissioners before we adjourn for today?
My, uh, there was a lady, is it Susan Colley, Colley? A lady who addressed us? I don't, forgive me. Susan Colley, Colley? Yes.
Yes.
That lady, I, I was struck by something you said, but it wasn't appropriate for me to make a comment at that moment. But to you and to others, and I know it can be discouraging as you see us voting approval for some of the projects. We're working within a framework provided by the final decision-makers, who are the Board of County Commissioners, the seven Board of County Commissioners. We are an advisory board. So some of us who feel passionate, as one of the other commissioners said, about issues, try to work within that framework. Today, on a number of those projects, we know there is a legal use of this new commerce land use and we know that if a property is adjacent to it or has access to, and has access to a major roadway, then the Board of County Commissioners has decided that that's appropriate. That's why I kept asking and other commissioners about how we might make that more palatable. So it's not that we're pulling it out of thin air, yes or no. We're working within a framework imposed upon us. On this last item, the difference was that that project doesn't fit within what is the existing framework and that was the difference.
Okay.
So thank you, but thank you for your interest.
All right, thank you.
So that was a test, just to see who was reading, keeping up with the agenda because technically we're supposed to confirm our 2023 meeting dates and then also we need to elect a chair and a vice chair. But I also think that Commissioner Larson, I'm going to blame you because when you said bippity-boppity boo, I think at 1:00 PM I turned into a pumpkin. So I was trying to get out of here. But in any event, yeah, it's getting late in the day. In any event, we, yeah, we need to confirm our meeting dates for 2023. Has everyone had a chance to look at the proposed calendar for next year?
Yeah.
All right. Are there any proposals in terms of changing dates at this time?
Mr. Chair, I propose we cancel the July meeting. Traditionally, it's been canceled anyway. I know that everybody likes to travel. I don't know if that's something that anybody else would agree to, but I would like to skip that particular meeting.
I think by, by our code, we have to have 12 meetings per year, so.
We can always cancel it as we go along.
Yeah, that's typically how we do it. If there's nothing on the agenda, we'll cancel it ahead of time. But we can keep that in mind, that July is not a favorable month.
I know, there's a lot of people aren't around, though.
I just have one other.
Yes.
I mentioned earlier when I saw it, the January 13th one, I don't know how well attended it'll be because you're right against the MLK holiday on a Monday and, you know, you get to Friday before. People might want to extend a weekend. I didn't see any other of those types of conflicts along the calendar, except, well, yeah, that's the only one that really kind of jumped out at me. So it, I'd say leave it, but it just might not be particularly well-attended if people are making a long weekend out of it.
Well, I probably, well, if I miss it, it would be because of my birthday, but.
Well, that should be a separate holiday.
I don't know that part, but. He's ready for the improv over here. But, you know, maybe we, maybe we do, maybe we could just move it to the 20th. I don't think that would hurt anything just to bump it one, one week.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, because, you know, people are out of school and so on and so forth, you know, but.
So if I could just explain why we have it on the 13th is because we have our Board of County Commissioners hearing on February 1st and so we need, we need time as staff to be able to prepare the staff reports and do our briefings. And there's a lot of process that happens in between that last planning commission and that Board of County Commissioners, so.
So once again, you guys know more than us, so we should just go along with this.
Better for staff, okay. Any objection to keeping it on the 13th with that new information? All right. I guess, do we need to have a motion to approve this proposed calendar, I guess? Can I get a motion to? Can we, do we need to do a motion to approve this, or?
Yes, I think it's helpful.
That's what I thought. So, yeah, maybe have a motion to accept the proposed.
Motion to accept the proposed meeting dates.
All right, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now we'll move to the election of Chair and Vice Chair for the upcoming year. When does the new year start for purposes of the Chair and Vice Chair?
I believe next month.
Next, that's what I thought. So year will start and our meeting in November, second Friday in November. So I think we have to, we just raise our hand and say I nominate Commissioner for this position and we start with the Chair position, correct?
I'd like to nominate Lori Vineker for Chair.
Thank you very much, I accept. If there is a second one, if there is a second, oh, thank you, Barbara.
I was actually trying to get clarity on how that works. Do we nominate them all at one time or how to? Because I actually missed the meeting that I was nominated for this for last year. So it's been a while since I've been at the meeting.
I, I don't think there's any prohibition against either way, but typically I would say take up Chair and then take up the Vice Chair.
But if you have, like, I was going to suggest nominating the Vice Chair with all candor. So how does that work? Do we have to go through, frankly, Ms. Vineker's been the Chair a couple of different times, so I think it's good to have different people in the seat. So how does that work? Do we have to, since, although technically, Ms. Bros, I didn't recognize you, but we'll go with that point that you made a motion to appoint.
Or there can be multiple, certainly there can be multiple nominations and then you would all.
But do we do them one at a time? So do we need to vote up or down as to whether Ms. Vineker will be our next Chair? Or, that's what I'm asking, what's the action procedure for this?
Hold, if you give me a minute, I've got a cheat sheet here.
Okay.
And I will, I will look at it and I will see what I can tell you.
All right.
All right.
Do you want to move on to whatever's next?
Whatever's next is the Vice Chair, so this is it, yeah.
All right, here we go. A nomination is a motion to elect a person to a position. The methods of nomination are the Chair, where the Chairperson nominates the candidate. From the floor, where a member nominates the candidate, or you have a ballot, let's see. Menu ballot elections. Roll call, election in which each member stands and states for which candidate he or she is voting. Elected officers win their seats when they win the most votes. Elected officer takes his or her office immediately upon winning an election unless the Assembly's rules state otherwise. So, um, let's see.
So we can just simply say Commissioner 1, 2, and 3. If they accept the nominations, then just have, basically have persons have vote for Commissioner 1 or Commissioner 2 or Commissioner 3. I think that would be the quickest way.
Yeah.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, if Ms. Vineker would like to be the Chairperson, I have absolutely no, I will withdraw.
Yeah.
I will decline the nomination that you.
And I was actually nominating you out of respect to you being the Vice Chair for the year. I actually would like to nominate Commissioner Stopek if he's interested in serving in the position. Okay, thank you. So now, so then we have two persons at this point, unless someone else wants to nominate an additional Commissioner for Chair.
I think you need a second for your motion.
All right. I move then I'll pass the gavel to you then, if you will accept it. Thank you, sir. I move that Commissioner Stopek be the incoming Chair for the, for the board.
I second.
Thank you. All right. So now we have those two candidates. So I guess persons who would like Ms. Vineker to be, yes.
I have a question?
Yes, of course.
In my time serving on this board, we've never done this, so I'm confused.
How did you do it when you?
Uh, we, five, six years and Commissioner Vineker goes back further, I believe. You either vote up or down on a nomination, but now we're, some people are going to vote for one and some for another, but you're saying that, I'm not, I'm not aware of that happening.
There can be multiple nominations made for the same.
Yeah, it's not like.
And then you can all select.
Commissioner Vineker's not good at the position. I just would like to see Commissioner Stopek in the position. We've had basically a handful of the same people kind of running the meetings. I think you're all equipped and able to do it and I think it's time to let someone else differently do it. Like you said, you've been here six years and Commissioner Vineker's been here more than that. Commissioner Stopek's accounted for himself very well. I, I mean, we'll see where the vote goes, but I'd like to have him be considered.
I, Mr. Chair, I had declined your nomination because I was, because Ms. Vineker is a longstanding member and I thought she was more qualified. I, it's going to be Mr. Stopek. I've been here a little bit longer, I'd prefer to be at me then at that point.
Okay. Yeah, because it's not about the length of time that a person's on the board. So, so you are, you would be willing to.
I would, exactly.
Serve, okay. Then out of respect for you as the Vice Chair, I'd like to, I guess, rescind my motion now?
Okay.
And then you.
I'll make, I better yet, I'll make a substitution move. I'll substitute my motion, pass it again, yes. I'd like to substitute my, my last motion to nominate Commissioner Stopek as the incoming Chair and instead I'd like to nominate Vice Chair for the position of Chair going into 2023.
I second.
All right. So we still have the two candidates. All right. And so at this point in time, I guess, let's just do it by show of hands. Those persons and Commissioner, Commissioner Pardue, since you're on Webex, just state, I, or for the candidate you support, okay? But by a show of hands.
I'm lost now, it went back and forth.
Yeah, so exactly. So Commissioner Pardue, we have two prospective candidates for the Chair position. We have Commissioner Vineker and Vice Chair Siegel. And so what I'm going to do right now is ask for those persons who would like Ms. Vineker to be the incoming Chair. Please just raise your hand. So we have Commissioner Bros and Commissioner Roth and Commissioner Vineker. All right. Commissioner, well, feel free to jump in whenever you choose to. In that regard, Commissioner Pardue. And so now we have Vice Chair Siegel, all in favor of him being the next Chair, effective in November.
Aye for Sarah.
All right. So we have a majority in regard to Vice Chair Siegel now being the Chair, beginning November of this year through October of 2023. Congratulations, sir. Now we'll turn to the issue of Vice Chair. I'll take most motions to nominate candidates at this time. I'd like to pass the gavel again. Oh, Commissioner Roth, please, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate for Vice Chair Commissioner Stopek.
I'll second.
Do we have any additional candidates for Vice Chair? All right. Hearing none. If you accept, I don't think we need to belabor at this point. Congratulations, sir. All right. All right. So now we'll turn to commission, comments by commission members. Thank you, Commissioner Roth, for your previous comments. Do we have any additional comments? Commissioner Bros, anybody? All right.
One comment, Mr. Chair, and if it's possible for staff. And again, moving on to the, the new year, if it's possible for us to limit the number of applications that come before us, so we can get out of here before or around the lunch, lunchtime. It is now 1:00. You know, even at my office where I mistreat my employees, they get lunch at some point. So I, I'm hopeful that we can try to make some arrangement to at least limit it or, or limit the time that we take to do the applications. I know your challenge.
Yeah, it, right now, honestly, is I think probably the largest amount of amendments that we've had in, I can't even tell you how many years. So I, I, I understand the sentiment and we do try to balance how we do the agendas, but sometimes it's not possible, but I hear you.
I'm, I'm asking as kindly as possible to be kind to the people who are volunteering, please. Thank you.
Any, yes, yes, Commissioner Searle.
Just real quickly, and, you know, in the limited time I've been here, I want to thank Commissioner Ferguson. I mean, I, I've been around a lot of meetings and stuff and I think you did a very good job and certainly this one was a little more difficult than previous ones and certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments before we close? All right. Again, I want to restate what I said earlier. It's been a real honor to work with you all. You all are very good at what you do, exceptional even, beyond very good. And I've really enjoyed my time here on the board and I enjoyed my time as the Chair. It's definitely a different vantage point, different requirements and obligations, expectations, but you all made it much easier than I think it could have otherwise have been. And Patricia was great as well when she served as well. So wherever she is, I want to tip my cap to her as well. And, and counsel, thanks for always attempting to keep me straight. I'm like, I'm about to say it, but, yeah, it's okay, though. I, I know your heart's in the right place. And I'm sure that Commissioner Siegel, you'll be, you'll be doing an excellent job moving forward. And Commissioner Stopek, I know you're going to also be a great addition to us as Vice Chair moving forward. And so with that, I would just want to encourage everybody to please get out and vote. I think I said that two months ago. That's one of our civic duties. Let's get out there, vote for the candidate of your choice. I don't care if it's the dog catcher, but please get out there and vote. It's, it's very important. With that, I'll turn to our planning, oh, there.
Me?
Yes, no, no. PNZ, any comments from PNZ?
No comments.
All right, any, any comments from Planning Commission?
From. Go ahead.
For the Commission, you guys, it is.
Just one.
Especially turn to the pumpkin now, from the Planning Director, forgive me.
Just one comment. So we have maintained allowance for the remote participation well beyond, you know, the emergency order expiring. So we are going to go back to traditional how it had been prior to 2020. So this will be the last meeting where we had, will have had that allowance.
Okay.
It was strictly in-person. Yes, it was, it was strictly in-person attendance.
Counsel, any, any comments?
No, no.
All right. Then we are adjourned. Everybody have a great weekend, see you soon.